Good morning. Good morning. I'll now ask Father Graham Bott to just pray a blessing over our meeting today.
Thank you, Chairman. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. God, creator, ruler of all, we ask your blessing on members of this council who have been called to show care and responsibility in the community. We thank you for the service of all those who are retiring from office in this coming year. We pray that those who seek to follow them will be guided by your wisdom as you have guided them. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. God almighty, we ask you to bless the work of this county. We pray especially for those who lead it, those who carry it to work, that they may do so wisely and compassionately. We make our prayer through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. If I do to join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Please take your seats. Just a small piece of housekeeping before we start. We will finish promptly at 1pm today. If we need an afternoon session, then we will have an afternoon session, but we will be finishing at 1 o'clock. Item one of today's agenda apologies. Are there any apologies for absence?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Council. Yes, we do. We have a number of apologies. We have councillors Perry, Spencer, Tag, Waring, and Winnington.
Are there any further apologies? No. Swiftly moving on to item two, the declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Before we move on to item three and take into account item six on the agenda, I'm going to bring in the deputy monitoring officer just to talk about declarations of interest on item six on today's agenda. Deputy Monitoring Officer.
Thank you. I'm going to read out a summary of the advice from the monitoring officer and deputy chief executive that was circulated to all members on the 5th of March. This concerns advice on interests and predetermination in local government reorganisation. In relation to members' interests in local government reorganisation, disclosable pecuniary interests. Members must register and declare pecuniary interests, including any employment, office, trade, profession, or vocation carried on for profit or gain. Membership of a local authority qualifies as a disclosable pecuniary interest due to the receipt of remuneration. Local government reorganisation. The advice of the monitoring officer is that discussion on interim plans and proposals linked to the reorganisation is indirectly related to members' interests. Therefore, members do not need to declare their DPI and can participate and vote in discussions today about the future shape of local government. Other registrable interests. Temporary nature, interests as members of local authorities are temporary and based on electoral cycles. Current interests will cease post-election in May 2025. The advice of the monitoring officer is that the discussion on the interim plans regarding local government reorganisation does not directly relate to members' interests, again allowing participation without declaring an interest. Predetermination and local government reorganisation. Predetermination. A decision can be deemed unlawful if decision-makers have closed mind. Members can express strong views but must remain open to considering evidence. Predisposition is acceptable but predetermination is not. Twin-hatted members. Members who have already voted on the issue at their district borough council can still vote at the county council if they are willing to consider all evidence before making a final decision, and members must remain open to alternatives. In conclusion, members may take part and vote in discussions on local government reorganisation today without declaring an interest, provided they are open-minded and willing to consider evidence. This advice is specific to the discussion today, March 13, 2025, and will need to be revisited before the final proposal in November 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three on today's agenda, I moved the minutes of the council meeting held on the 13th of February 2025 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Thank you. Where am I signing? Thank you. Item four on today's agenda, which is the chairman's correspondence, I have one piece of correspondence today. It is my incredibly sad duty to inform the council of the death on the 10th of February 2025 of the honorary alderman Charles Edward Holland. Miss Holland represented the former Newcastle Rural County Electoral Division on the county council between 1989 and 2005. He served on a number of the council's committees, including the Enterprise and Economic Development Committee, the Fire and Public Protection Committee, and the Highways Committee, the Planning Committee, and the Regeneration Scrutiny Committee. He was appointed to honorary alderman on his retirement from the county council in 2005. I'm aware that there's at least one member wants to speak a few words about, I believe it's Ted, isn't it? councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Ted, well, he was on the council for 16 years and a really good friend to Staffordshire. Prior to your few brief words, it actually didn't give justice to Ted's career because he was a county planning officer, in particular for the north of the county, and knew every planning application in the Moorlands, Stoke and Newcastle at the back of his hand. He used to say he kept a file of any controversial planning decisions in case they came back to haunt him. But he used to hold, he had pertinent points in this chamber and held, you know, an opinion and took very precise and used to say, you know, have you ever thought about this? And the one thing that he really was very, very keen on was the way that judicial reviews had come into decisions that were happening with planning. And if you cast your mind back, you know, a lot of planning now is decided by planning officers, and it just gets a rubber stamp. But he was very keen, and it's a legal aspect, that if it went to a planning committee and it was the decision of the people duly arrived at, that was it. There was no need, the judicial review was just in the process. And if it went to a committee of your equals, that was it. So Ted, he was years in opposition, I think you have to remember, from when he was elected in 89, and so it was a different sort of thing to being in a group that was in control. And he'd think about what was going on in the current climate with a lot of interest. I bet Ted's funeral is next week down at Telford, and I bet he's looking down on us and making comments even now. His real interest was Staffordshire through and through, didn't matter where you cut him. And my thoughts are with his family and his grandchildren as well, so, you know, sad loss, I'm afraid, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Atkins. Councillor Paul Northcott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, councillors. Ted's passing was incredibly sad one. I remember when I first took up office, the community valued his contributions even long after he left the council. And time to time, I'd come into contact with Ted, and the depth of knowledge that he had was second to none in terms of planning, and he was an absolute godsend in terms of being able to impart some of his advice into my ears, which I have taken to this day. Such a lovely guy and a valued asset to his community. No matter if you were in opposition or not, he still found that middle ground to give you that advice in terms of planning. So my thoughts are with his family, friends and relatives. And I won't go on any further than that, Chair, because I think councillor Atkins has covered that quite adequately, but I just wish to say God rest and peace.
Thank you, councillor Northcott. Can I ask members and members of the public to please to rise for a minute's silence Item five on today's agenda, on today's agenda even, statement to the leader of the council. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of the statement, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I move consideration of the leader's statement.
Currently, I have no speakers on this. I do, I spoke far too soon. Councillor Keith Flunder.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Chair. Just really wanted to say, general item on this, I've talked to Philip on this, and just to let people know that we've had an opening of the Leake markets a couple of weeks ago, and it was all helped and supported by the councillors and the officers here, and they've been very good at looking at the library and everything else as well. So I just wanted to say that in the background of all these different elements that will be going on, the things that we are now doing in the north have progressed, and I hope that they will continue to progress, and I hope that the officers and Philip and all his staff will help continue to pursue, shall we say, the best way forward and to support the people up in the Moorlands. Thank you very much.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good morning, everybody. Yes, just briefly, thank you for that, councillor Flunder, and yes, of course, we'll continue to work with our colleagues in the Moorlands as we do in all the districts of Staffordshire on regeneration and on business growth. And it was just business growth that I wanted to just speak to briefly, because there are two bullet points on this item that sit next to each other quite nicely, I think, that speak to business growth. So the first of those is the news that JCB have celebrated their millionth backhoe, which is a wonderful, wonderful testament to Staffordshire manufacturing over many, many years. But it's interesting to note, I think, that the first 50% of those backhoes, the first half million, took 59 years to create. So the order book for half a million was 59 years worth, but then less than 13 years for the second half. So what a wonderful growth story there, a business in Staffordshire employing more and more people and generating more and more wealth for our county, for the people who work for their business and in their supply chain. But then next to that, our support in Lymdale, in Newcastle, for one of the businesses of the future, one of many that we support, so Semper, an accountancy firm which is now employing 30 people, growing in one of our enterprise centres. And that really reflects, I think, what we do here. So we look after the big and the small in terms of our businesses, we help them to grow, employ more people, and offer those people good lives through the work that they do in Staffordshire businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item two. Thank you. Moving on to item two on the lead statement, it's the capital programme for schools 2025 to 2026. Quite a number of speakers. David Smith, are you as the first speaker? Was that a legacy from the last one, or did you want to speak on this item?
Chair, probably it would be equally appropriate.
Councillor Smith, it doesn't need to be equally appropriate, we're talking about item two. So it's not equally appropriate, are we talking about item two?
I simply want to point out that I'm sure... Reflect back again on how we've all achieved things within our divisions, and I just wanted to point out to members that I accused of going on about investment within Lichfield District, and that that's now come to a conclusion, and the Lichfield South development, which I've worked together with the developer for 27 years, has now attracted £50 million worth of investment, which I think is notable in whichever way you look at it.
Councillor Smith, I did give you some latitude. You were far too late asking, we'd already called or whatever, and you're not talking about the schools programme, councillor Smith, so...
I was talking about investment.
And that's fine, but that was on a previous item, and we was talking about the previous items. Thank you, councillor Smith, I am moving on. Councillor Philip Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a practitioner working with special educational needs and disability children for the last 12 years since I retired from the police, I am really, really pleased to see this investment in our schools for the future, I really am. It'll be well spent. We have lots of young people in our communities who need the extra special help to help them get on in the world. We've got some lovely students who just need that support to get there in life, and I really welcome this expenditure, and thank you so much to the cabinet member for doing it for next year. Thank you.
Councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Schools capital programme really doesn't help us in Leake because we have two high schools which have a capacity of 1,500 pupils and only about 1,000 pupils enroll. So, and both schools have issues with their buildings. What we really need is a new school on the outskirts of Leake, which could then take pupils from both sides of the town. But this school's capital programme doesn't go anywhere near providing that new school, which is so much needed, because obviously it would require a lot of house building, when in fact what we desperately need is one excellent school. We've still got two good schools, but what we really need is a new school that could bring together all the pupils right across Leake, given that we have not enough pupils to fill those two schools to capacity. Thank you.
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Yeah, I was listening to Charlotte then about talking about Leake and reminded me of years ago when we were having discussions about the same sort of thing, and the same sort of things happened in the Toxtor area with the three-tier system and two-tier, but we have what we have. And I was very pleased to attend, along with Philip Hudson, I didn't see anybody else there actually, no, there wasn't, to have a look at what the plans were for Thomas Lane's High School and their new innovation hub, which is three classrooms, to take account of the extra housing that's been built on the edge of the town and the growth in the area. They desperately need the classrooms and it will accommodate those children. But also interesting to hear about the education that will happen in this innovation hub, because one of the things they were very keen on, and apparently the students are, is the land-based economy. So they were really interested in what my experience of Southstaff College in Robbiston and the fact that that is full to the brim of students who want to get into agriculture, despite what the government does to farming.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I welcome this investment, which I presume is targeted at the county-maintained schools as opposed to the academy schools. And I would like to make a request that the cabinet member looks at the provision of SEND facilities in Biddles specifically. We have got a number of issues with schools with a reduced standard role, but we have got a high SEND demand, which is really catered for by parents having to struggle within the school system or send the school on extended transport routes. And I'm just wondering whether county-maintained schools like Squirrel Hayes can be brought into the equation, where the role number has dropped, and there is actually space to provide a degree of cohabitation there with the SEND facilities, and that would cater for the whole bit of the two divisions, and I'm sure that would be very much beneficial to the town itself. Thank you.
Councillor Jean Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. This will be my last council meeting, so I'll just try and be brief, but I don't think I will. Can I just say, Mr. Chairman, that this council has been so supportive of SEND for the last 16 years I've been on the council. In 2009, when I got on this council, I'd already been associated with SEN programmes for 20 years prior to it. We built Greenall Special Schools from this county, which opened in 2009, which were for youngsters with cerebral palsy, basically, and we had a hydrotherapy pool put in that brand-new school to help with that situation. Since then, I became the chair of governors at Morrison Special School, which was in the south end of town at Wildwood. We had 44 children enroll at that school, which was in a terrible condition, and I pushed the then-cabinet member, councillor Ben Adams at the time, who was absolutely brilliant in doing something about it. And we identified that one of the places we could move to was an old folk centre in the north end of town in Heath. Now, what happened there was, we managed to get one and a half million pounds to refurbish the building, and we then moved into that school in September 2013, I think it was. Since then, the school has grown exponentially. It's now got 179 children enroll, we've got 100 staff, we've got a turnover of 1.7 million, and the job it's doing is absolutely brilliant. It's thanks to this council that that works been done, it's thanks to this council that the buildings were done, it's thanks to this council that money was made available to do it. I must say that the current cabinet member, Jonathan Price, has been absolutely brilliant and supported us on a lot of these projects. We've now got to expand the school yet again, we put another portable building in there, we're looking to put another portable building in there, and the county is going to expand the school by 36 square metre classroom. We have currently, coming in in September, we will have 199 pupils enroll. For a special school, that's quite big, and it takes some organisation, the head is absolutely brilliant, councillor. Mrs. Alice is absolutely brilliant, and the thing about it is that we've managed to contain the children in particular classrooms, which actually go to the need that they've got to have while they're being taught. So when we built the other school, the new school, we had put in each classroom had its own playground, so, and it was all fenced off, because safeguarding is a major thing. We currently, two weeks ago, had an Ofsted, and we've come out good with outstanding features, because I didn't want to become outstanding, because the only way it went outstanding is down. So we're maintaining a good with outstanding features school. I must say that the cabinet member has been very supportive on anything we've done in that school, and continues to be very supportive, and I look forward to that situation continuing with the next council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Janice Sylvester-Hall.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, colleagues as well. I too am very pleased to see this investment, and especially towards special educational needs and disabilities. I've often been quoted over the past four years as to having more correspondence in my email inbox than on highways at times, but to do with SEND, and that gives you a little bit of context as to what the environment is like at the moment. And this additional funding will make a significant amount of difference to the experiences of those young people who are needing that extra support, as well as their wider families. And I've seen that firsthand myself in the past few months. I'd also like to take opportunity, whilst we have this particular agenda item, to thank the officers who I've worked with, who have been also very willing to spend their time to understand the issues, to give close attention, and to be supportive of all, including myself working with those families. Thank you.
Councillor Anne Edgeraff.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and good morning, everyone. Yes, as the mum of a special educational needs child, I welcome all this investment, and I compliment Jonathan Price on the actual work that he's done. It's absolutely brilliant, because I'm old enough to remember when this was, this council was Labour-controlled, and looking after children in care and special educational needs was absolutely, and I'll say it in all honesty, diabolical. I've got the evidence to prove it, if anybody wants to query it, so it was, and I don't want to go back to those days, so please, please, you remember that. And I've got to say quite honestly that the Labour-controlled council was, well, terrible, and they couldn't organise a pig in a trough as far as special educational needs for children were concerned. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Mois Sutherland.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, one and all. I'd like to thank this council for stepping in at a time when the new all-through school that planned for on the Rusheley Power Station site was in jeopardy. Thanks to this council, they went ahead with and gave that support that was needed. So for us, we get a brand-new school that will, is being built on time, and will open this September. So I would like to thank officers and cabinet for making sure that that happened, because it was in danger of not happening in this period of time. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you, Chairman. Since I took on this portfolio, I've lost substantially more hair and I've gone very, very grey, so I know some of the challenges we face around our schools. What I will say, though, is across the board and regardless of political parties, every division member within this chamber is extremely passionate about the educational provisions within their areas. And you can see from the comments we've had from various councillors today that they are really keen and supportive of those places within their communities. I mean, for instance, councillor Sutherland talks about the all-through school, and that particular project did give me sleepless nights, and the work that not only this county did with the Department for Education, but also the highways team as well on making sure that we got the roundabout put in place to enable us to open up that school. Councillor Francis talks about Marshland Special School as well, and I know he's done a substantial amount of work around SEND, as have other members here. I'm pleased to announce, of course, or should I say firstly, when you start to increase the numbers in your primary special schools, you then have to look at your secondary schools as well. Walton High would be the school for that particular primary feeder, but then you find that you've got demands, so we've done work... But then you find that you've got demands, so we've done work with the secondary school. Then they've discovered they don't have enough space. But now that we've got a proposal in place for a lease for Staffordshire Place Two, which will become a sixth-form further education centre for children with special educational needs, which enables us to be fully inclusive. So you can see, it is a really big jigsaw, which the school organisation team have worked really hard on. As far as special educational needs and disability provision across the county, we've done a gap analysis. We're fully aware of where those gaps are, of where we need to put that provision in. And as councillor Yates has talked about and councillor Atkins, one about repurposing potentially the League School, and we've had conversations about that, and the Squirrel Hayes and whether there will need to be provision in that area. If it's required, it's something that we will do. So we've worked really, really hard to make sure that those spaces are in the right areas. We also find population dips in certain areas as well. So I'll give another example. Tillington Manor Primary School found that the population in its area had shrunk from children's point of view. We repurposed half of that school and put a satellite of a special educational needs provision within that school to make it sustainable and to make sure that it had the pupil numbers. And then when we find there are other areas where there's a population growth, we've been building new schools, as you've seen across the county. And I am a Stafford lad, so I will talk about a couple of the projects. We've got a secondary school that was due to be started shortly, another primary school. We've recently opened a primary school. And we've also got Burly Fields, which is under construction at the moment. And these are just an example of a few. We have schools in Lichfield, Burton and other areas as well. So I'm really proud of the work that we do to make sure that we have the right school places in the right areas. SEND, as you know, is, the numbers are continually climbing, particularly around educational healthcare plans, and that puts pressure on this authority to make sure we've got those spaces for those children. Where they require it, of course, because one of the things we're really keen on is to make sure that a lot of those pupils remain in a mainstream setting where required. I think, as I said, really proud of the work we do, really proud of the work that the councillors have done as well and the officers to make sure that education is at the forefront of everything we do as a local authority and that everybody's behind it. Thank you.
councillor Alan White.
Mr Chairman, I don't know if we're amending the constitution today. I think we are. I just wonder if we need to include something about mobile phones going off in the middle of very important speeches and the penalty being a bottle of port per member or something like that?
I think it's clearly in our constitution. Councillor Cox, you owe a reasonable donation to the chairman's charity. I think that's fair, members. Are we agreed? Thank you, thank you so much. It's all going to a good cause. I'm moving on, councillor Francis. Moving on to item three, the integrated, on the leading statement, the Integrated Performance Report, quarter three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. This would normally just go through, but I think it's worth noting that there's an underspend. Well done, Cabinet, and well done, staff. And looking forward to the new council, because there'll be probably more than half of us, if we get elected, will be new. And it's one that this council should certainly recommend to the next council. Don't get overexcited because there's an underspend and there's a bit of money in the bank, because you need to continue this in years to come. And one of the first things that the council will be having to do is to maintain that good management of the council and its finances and resources. So well done to our staff, well done to the Cabinet, and may this go on. And I hope that this is minuted so at the AGM, when we elect chairman and everything else, we'll be able to point it out to the new council.
councillor Ian Parry.
Thank you, Chair. I don't think this is the right time to be complacent about anything, is it? We recognise that actually we're going to end the year in a strong position with a three million pound underspend. Not many councils that will be able to claim that, which has been done by good budgetary controls, repeatedly said, by the hard work of the staff, and by good governance and political oversight. Those are the ingredients we need to be able to make sure that these things are achieved. I reported at our last meeting that we will also have a three-year balanced budget moving forward, potentially a four-year balanced budget moving forward. Again, a strong positive position. But actually, that's just the plan. The reality comes later, doesn't it? And who'd have realised, looking back just a few months, that we'd now be in this kind of global geopolitical situation we have now? The seriousness of a president that sells cars from the forecourt of the White House is bad enough, but there's lots more besides, isn't there? And what the geopolitical situation is really telling us is lots of vulnerability, lots of uncertainty. And we saw that play out before, when the Ukraine war conflict first started, the invasion started. We saw every council in this country having their budgets torn up virtually as inflation rose, as interest rates rose, as energy costs went through the roof, as uncertainty on all sorts of economic factors, cost of borrowing, et cetera, impacted on those councils. And then payroll costs increasing, et cetera, as councils responded. So we are used to seeing what, how the situation can quickly change and how we as a council must prepare ourselves for those kinds of eventualities. So by no means are we thinking this is now a flat, level playing field, that we're just moving forward. What we see ahead of us is an extraordinarily uncertain and bumpy road. And as I've said before, we've still got to address those crucial issues around the system reform of SEND, of local government finance. And did anybody say local government reform?
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you to councillor Atkins for your comments. Very welcome. The platform that we bequeath to our successors in the new council is a stable one. It is one that has a balanced budget for the next three to four years, as councillor Parry pointed out. But he also pointed out the old adage, which is, when the United States sneezes, the rest of the world catches a cold. And I am very concerned about the stability of our finances because of the cost of materials, electricity, the cost of providing care to the people that we look after. So that we do have that stable platform to move forward, but the new council will have to continue to make very difficult decisions. When you look at the Integrated Performance Report for Staffordshire County Council, the work that we have, we've done together, that you've supported in this chamber, we do look around and we see other local authorities adjacent to us who are really struggling as a consequence of looking at what they were spending at the time and not making those decisions. All around us, local authorities having to have special government support. All around us, authorities who haven't made decisions to stop doing things that they couldn't afford to keep on doing. So thank you for your support in getting this Integrated Performance Report, quarter three, to where it is now. We bequeath to our successors a good platform, but we also know that our successors will have a great deal of uncertainty to deal with in the future as they come to make their decisions in their turn. Thank you, Mr Jim.
Thank you. Moving on to item four on today's leading statements, which is Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent, the joint strategic transport, oh, excuse me, transport statement. I have no speakers. Let's move on. Moving on to item five, which is the Wallis Quarry update. I waited for you there, Mr Huckfield. I knew you'd want to speak. Councillor Derek Huckfield.
I didn't expect to get up this morning to speak on this, to tell you the honest truth, especially after I made, especially after I made the statement which I made last week, last week last time, right? Can I just say, right, that finally, right, we've got a group of people out there in the, what we call, Stop the Stink, right? And they've done a magnificent job, right, for the people within my areas, right? They've stood there all the way through, right? No matter what's been thrown at them, right, to take this company on, as well as the county council and as well as Newcastle Council and other partners. Can I just say that there's a lot of concern because the owner has now walked away? The concern is this, right? Who's going to foot the bill? Will it be us, the ratepayers? Will it be the government, the environmental agency, right? And these are the questions that people are now asking. Who's going to foot the bill? This bloke has just gone and walked away from it all and left the area in devastation because now they don't know exactly what is going to happen, right? And I think it's time that somebody come forward now, right, and explain everything that's going to happen to the people within our areas, right? And it covers a big area. Can I just say for the last fortnight, we haven't had any smell. Wouldn't believe it, would you? All these years that what we've had to prop with, and now all of a sudden, right, we haven't got any smell. Now, that baffles me and it baffles a lot of people because a lot of people now are turning around and saying it. The air vents, they've taken the cardboard off the air vents now because that's, the smell was all coming in the houses, right? Now, they've taken the cardboard off because there's nothing there. So, you know, it's got a job on, really, to understand exactly what's happening. But in saying that, Mr Chairman, they're over the moon that it is now closed. They're over the moon that something is going to be done about it, right? There was a policy that was put forward, my understanding is, with planning, the Staffordshire County Council, right, of what would be done with the area, right, when it was shut down. Whether that'll still go ahead with the tree planting and everything else, I don't know. But I only hope one thing, Mr Chairman, and you're going to laugh at this, I hope they aren't going to build on it, right? Because they did that on the Hollywood in Silverail, right? And that was the old miney, right? And it was all on fire. And there's one good consolation, this weather, right, they don't have paper stands to eat it. When you've got underfloor itching like that, that's wonderful. So can I just say, Mr Chairman, and I'll say it again, right, the Staffordshire County Council, Newcastle, thank you very much for all your help, for putting up with me, right, over all these times, right? This is, I can't say, this is the last full council that should be attended, so I won't be able to speak on it again. I shan't be able to give you an update, right? But the leader of the council will be, no matter who, right, they will give a full report on this. And when he does, I hope it reminds you of when I spent four years here.
Thank you. We're all aware of the work you've done on Wallis Quarry and you're, we're all aware of the incredible support you've given to residents. So I think from the chair, I think I need to recognise that. And I'm sure, even though you're choosing to stand down, I'm absolutely convinced you will still work for residents on that particular issue. Thank you. councillor Jeremy Pitt.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and good morning, colleagues. Can I pay tribute to councillor Huckfield for being the tireless voice for his community, particularly on this issue, but also many others as well? I can assure him, first of all, that this will remain on the council's agenda despite him not being the elected representative going forwards for that area. So his legacy will be a long time going forwards. It's a really fluid situation because whether you see the government picking up the tab or whether you see the Environment Agency picking up the tab or local councils, it's still public money. And that is the real shame of the situation, that we, alongside councillor Huckfield and the district council, Newcastle Borough Council, have been raising this issue for many, many years, and it had fallen on deaf ears. And I don't think we need to replay the history that we all know about because we've followed this on a regular basis. And I can only say that the Environment Agency has only belatedly come to the party. Thanks to the change of personnel at the Environment Agency, they will be leading on the abandonment of this site. I'm pleased to say that the gas extraction company remains on-site and is continuing to work as previously despite Wallis Quarry Limited going into liquidation. And they will continue to work on-site and manage the groundwater levels that we're aware of. Complaints, I'm pleased to say, do remain low, which is probably related to the weather. And the Environment Agency officers have remained on-site during this period so that they can assess the site itself and use the discretionary powers that they have to ensure that all of the mitigations that are required are undertaken. And we will hold the Environment Agency to account on that. The Health Security Agency, what used to be Public Health Agency, have indicated equally that the raw data on air quality is slightly improved and I'm assured that the work that continues to be done on-site will continue to make sure that is the case. It is clearly a fluid situation, but it is clearly something that we need to keep abreast of to make sure that the residents who have been badly affected by the smells that have come from Wallis Quarry are dissipated and managed properly and professionally.
councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, my apologies for the inconveniences earlier, and I take the fine imposed from council as accepted. But on a serious note, on the Wallis Quarry, confirming what councillor Pitt has said in terms of the public health, this will remain very much an item on scrutiny because I don't think for one minute that we've, that there are going to be issues, have gone away. We've got to ensure that we're keeping on top of it. So as and when, it will remain on the work programme and whoever the committee is and so forth, I hope that they can pick it up and ensure that it will be monitored going forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I have no further speakers. Moving on to item six on today's leading statements, which is King Charles visits Staffordshire. I rarely ever speak on any item, but I've decided I will on this one. It was a real privilege for me to represent the Staffordshire County Council with a small, amongst a small group, just to welcome King Charles to Staffordshire. It generally was a privilege and to have a short conversation with him. councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's a real privilege, I think, for Staffordshire to have a visit from the King. And I was pleased to see that he went to the Tower Brewery in Burton upon Trent, but I also understand that your Toxtaw Brewing Company was represented as well, so that the brewing goes across the district. But of course, the main part of the visit was the 80th anniversary of JCB, and they celebrated, as was mentioned earlier, the millionth back home. You really can't appreciate how much JCB has brought in a raising in people's opportunities, skills, outlook on life, wealth, and as a result, their health and wellbeing. Living in Roaster, as I do for all my life, I've watched that factory grow at the far end of the village, and it's a little bit of a family joke. But my uncle John actually sold Joe the cheese factory where the factory is, still stands. And if you go in the factory, it's still got the wall of the old cheese factory. So I always pull Lord Bamford's leg and just wonder whether we actually got fully paid out. But anyway, that's another story. But to watch, over the years, people have jobs there, travel around the world, see places that they'd never, you know, before JCB, it would have just been a rural agricultural community. See places that they would never have the opportunity to see, to have a pension that they can enjoy. And it was pleasing to see Ken Harrison there, one of the original, well, he wasn't one of the original well, because he started in 1952, but he's 100. And to see him there with some of his family. And that rolling-on effect is still going on today because of the innovation that the JCB are bringing, Anthony, because of young Joe and his riot buses and hydrogen. and the hydrogen diggers going forward, I noticed he showed King Charles that. The amount of opportunities for men and women and to see a woman putting a wheel on the back axle and showing the King how to put the bolts on, the nuts on, I found quite amusing. But I would do any, because I've got to declare an interest, my daughter works there in quite an interesting position at the moment. But it really is something to be proud of. And that wealth and as a result, the health and wellbeing of our county helps this council do its business. Because if people are in that position, they less rely on our services. So it's really key that businesses like JCB are encouraged to build their businesses in Staffordshire, remembering that Joe started out making trailers out of a stable, started small, growing through luck and his own exuberance and the way that he worked. And that is the way forward for Staffordshire because everything else will fall into place as a result of that. And I'm quite certain, as you put in the paragraph, Chairman, I'm hoping that the King comes and visits Staffordshire many times again. He's got lots of reasons to do so, the NMA, the other businesses across the county, the beautiful countryside, which I know he used to enjoy when he was a young person, when he used to come and support and do a bit of horse riding. The fact that he was probably after some hounds as well beside the boy. But he does enjoy this country, countryside and firms like JCB. Well done to JCB and long may it continue.
councillor Hussain.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It was an honour to meet with the King Charles on my local town when he visited Tower Brewery as well. I was invited by our Deputy Lord Lieutenant, Mr Robinson's MBA, Ben Robinson, MBE. And I had the opportunity to shook the hands with the King and had a very few seconds conversation as well. And he was very appreciative towards our community work and community cohesion and he clearly expressed his pleasure of achieving our community cohesion and activities. Mr Chairman, I must say, we are so fortunate to have such a humble King, so down to earth. And this is the first time ever I met with him. This is the second time, sorry, I was in the garden party the other day. And I wish all these big dignitaries, including especially politicians, whether from local level to the highest in the House of Commons or wherever, they should take a leaf from his book. Indeed, it was a proud moment and a memory I will cherish all my life. And I was given some pictures and strictly told not to share with the social media and I have honoured this request, I won't do this. My family is also very proud to see these pictures as well. And overall, I would say our town was immensely proud to have his presence. And finally, Mr Chairman, Lord Save the King.
councillor Mark Deville.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Councillor Hussain, thank you so much for sharing that. I mean, the pride that you hold is so obvious to all of us and that's a great story and thank you for sharing that with all of us. It's great that you met His Majesty the King. Congratulations to you and I'm really share your pleasure for you. So that's great. Totally endorse Mr Atkins's comments, Mr Chairman. Like you, Philip, I've seen the company grow, I've seen JCB grow to the point where it is now. And, you know, I very often say, Mr Chairman, that in our area, thank God for JCB and thank God for Alton Towers. They provide so many opportunities for everyone in our area, particularly young people. And I can remember, Mr Atkins, going back in the days of Mr JCB, and Mr JCB's philosophy, Mr Chairman, was absolutely, we stay until the job's done. And when he said we, he meant we. And he stayed with the team and was very, very often still on the factory at midnight. He used to go down to the local chip shop, didn't he, Philip? And bring the team fish and chips. And it's been driven on that philosophy. And that philosophy has so fantastically been taken on by Lord Banford. And the deputy leader mentioned earlier, you know, the rate of growth of the company has escalated massively under Lord Banford's stewardship. So it's a great story. And I was personally very fortunate recently to visit the JCB plant in Savannah. So I've seen it grow from just about the cheese factory period of time, a bit after that, to what it is now, you know, a worldwide company that we in Staffordshire can be rightly proud of.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to pay tribute to the Royal Family and the work that they do to draw attention to Staffordshire. We get more than our fair share of royal visits mainly because we have the National Memorial Arboretum within our county boundaries, but also because there's such a great deal of work that goes on. A visit by a member of the Royal Family sticks with you, not just for a week or a month, but for all of your life. My first encounter with then Prince Charles, I was at the bottom of a trench. I'd been at the bottom of a trench for about a week, wet, cold and miserable when I was in the parachute regiment. And then Prince Charles was Colonel-in-Chief of the parachute regiment. And this head appears over the top of my trench and goes, "Good morning." And I looked up and said, "Morning, sir. What brings you here?" And he'd just come out for a morale- a morale-boosting visit. And it makes a huge difference to the way you feel, not just about what you've got within your county boundaries, what you're doing in your role, but also creates those memories that live with you for the rest of your life. So along with councillor Hussain, I just want to pay tribute to the humility, the humbleness of the Royal Family and with you joining saying, "God save the King."
Thank you, and thank you to the speakers on that item. Moving on to item seven on the leading statement, which is the major investment events that are taking place. councillor Philip Atkins.
Yeah, I think this is really quite important, this paragraph. And I'm pleased to see the A50-500 corridor mentioned a couple of times. I noticed that, and Keel University is one of the jewels in our crown, and all the other places, Gungate, and that's really going on well, I know that with the college and everything else, Burton Town Centre and Lichfield, and I understand there's some new movements on that as well. But I really wanted to speak about the 5500 because that really is a partnership role, not just between Stoke and Staffordshire, but also all the other shires and the mayor along the whole corridor. And it is pretty vital that that continues to be pushed by everybody involved. You know, if we have a mayor, that will be another role for them as well. But it isn't just one place. And I know, Chairman, the difficulties of shepherding, herding the caps around the table to get it forward. And I just wish the leader and the deputy's leader, good luck and all the support of this council in pursuing these projects.
councillor Philip Hudson.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I want to carry on from what Philip has said. We work very closely together in Utoxeter Urban and Utoxeter Rural, and it affects my area, my division as well. So we've got two important roundabouts on the A50 at Utoxeter. We have the one by McDonald's and we have the one at Derby Road. We had an accident last week where a person was ran over by the McDonald's roundabout. And I use the Derby Road one every day to go to and back from Derbyshire. It's important that we get those two roundabouts sorted. But we're going to have a hamburger roundabout, to understand, at McDonald's, similar to the one that we have in Etruria up in Stoke. And it's very important that we do now try and progress those two areas because of all the people that we have now living in Utoxeter, most of them commute out of Utoxeter and our roads are becoming very congested. And the A50 at certain times of the day is very congested and we really need to get that traffic flow moving.
councillor Philip White.
So this item is a double header. I'll do it in reverse order because we've had a couple of comments about the A50-500 corridor. That is our biggest investment proposition in Staffordshire at this time. And I just wanted to speak to the event that happened in Parliament last Tuesday hosted by the MP for Burton Utoxeter, where I was lucky enough to chair a meeting with members of Parliament, business leaders and others from academia and other places, representing the full length of this corridor, so literally from Cheshire East all the way to North West Leicestershire, all supporting our proposition into government for them to make a modest investment in the development of this corridor, some of which is roads infrastructure. And I was very pleased that we had the Roads Minister, Lillian Greenwood, sat opposite me during that meeting. I did mention Roads investment more generally to her as well. But this is an economic proposition. It is one of the biggest economic growth corridors in the country with businesses like JCB, Rolls Royce, Alston, Toyota and others already investing their money in developing the products of the future, particularly around hydrogen. And we have been working on this proposition. The latest work that we've done demonstrates that with that modest investment from government, we could see a 10% growth in the economy of the whole of the North Midlands through that investment. So that is the A50-500 corridor. But this item is talking about UK Reef. That is the showcase for investment propositions of that nature across the whole of the UK. It's our version of Mipin without the sunshine, sadly, as it's in Leeds. And the really important thing for me about it is that we go as Team Staffordshire to this event. So it is ourselves, but it is all the districts and boroughs of Staffordshire as well. And we have investment propositions aplenty around the county. So the 5500 is the biggest one, but the length and breadth of the county, we have wonderful propositions for businesses to look at to invest in our place. We attract a lot of interest at UK Reef and that's very good in terms of showcasing that. But it is that point about the length and breadth of the county that I would want to highlight and the wonderful work that we do with our districts and boroughs as a team, already, thinking of the next item we've got on our agenda, already working together to showcase our place nationally and to attract that interest from major investors.
councillor Mark Deville.
We know we've emphasised the importance of the A50-500 corridor, can we? And I remember, Chairman, a few years back now, speaking on site to the then Transport Secretary, it was Chris Grayling at the time, about the importance of moving this project forward. And I'm delighted to see the progress that's been made. And it's not just about, you know, the works going on locally that Mr Hudson's speaking of. Of course, it's essential to improve access to direct route to the Staffordshire Peak District, direct route, of course, to Utoxeter Racecourse. It's going to be very, very busy on Saturday because Saturday is Midlands Grand National Day. So not only is it important for those local improvements, but it's essential for the big picture, isn't it? That government, as Mr White just emphasised, that government know the importance, strategic importance of Staffordshire. You know, we're not just an area between Birmingham and Manchester. And the A50-500 route will link up, we're within, all points in Staffordshire are within an hour of four international airports. So the A50-500 will enhance the route to Manchester, Liverpool, Birmingham and East Midlands. So it's great progress and I know that the new council will pursue this progress with no complacency. It's really, really important to all of us, isn't it?
councillor Alan White.
Mr Chairman, I think we shouldn't get too obsessed by the A50-500 corridor project. It's one of the many things that we are doing, but I just want to do a bit of a name check to the other projects. We're going to Leeds in May, we're going to sell Staffordshire to the wider world. In May, there's going to be a load of investors with a lot of money and they want to spend that money in different places around the country. And we want to persuade them that Staffordshire is the place to come and spend that money. councillor Smith, if he'd have had the chance to speak to it, would have talked about the Lichfield Park, Lichfield South project. A50-500, we've gone on at length, that's not a roads project. The roads component is a benefit of the economic growth that will be triggered by that. Let's not forget I54, a project that we've been running with for 16 years. There's still capacity there to do more and we want to sell that. The economic growth corridor in South Staffordshire in partnership with Wolverhampton City Council, again, looking at the growth we can trigger there. Chatterley Valley in the north, Liberty Park in Lichfield. So there's lots of opportunities for investors to come and develop their projects in Staffordshire. We go together, we go together as ten. The eight districts and boroughs, the county and the city, we present a united front to the world out there to say, "Come and invest in Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent because this is the place where you can get business done. This is the place where you can grow your businesses," councillor Atkins and councillor Deville talked to about JCB. And we've got the ingredients for success. We will go and sell that to the wider world in May and I hope we come back with something to show for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight on the leading statement, which is school places. councillor Philip Hudson.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The reason why I'm speaking on this matter today is to dispel the myths that Utoxeter people have about school places in Utoxeter. We see on social media regularly that due to the amount of new houses that are being built, people are saying that we don't have enough places for our students in Utoxeter. That is untrue. We've built a new first school at Bramshaw Meadows, there are 300 vacancies at Utoxeter, Thomas Lane School, we have building a new innovation centre in the school, a new science block, there's sufficient place on Old Fields and Windsor Park to build should we need to. And when I look at the here, nine out of 10 parents in Staffordshire got their first choice and 99% of parents were allocated in the top three. So there's no issue with school places at all. And I just wanted to dispel this myth that Utoxeter people have that we don't have enough places for our students. Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr Chair.
councillor John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. The only thing that I'm worried about with this is particularly with my brilliant head teacher, Mrs Kim Prince Hansen at Marsham Special School, has had to start turning pupils away, which we don't want to do. And I believe, I think, if the cabinet member, councillor Price, corrects me, that we've got a legal obligation to take these pupils. Well, to have more than 10 SEM pupils in a class is, quite frankly, not good. And it gives us a safeguarding problem. Now, as I alluded to earlier on, we've got 177 pupils on roll at the minute, we'll go up by another 22 in September. We just can't keep cramming them in. And as I alluded to earlier, the county have been doing a fantastic job in trying to get us extra places. In fact, they actually, we actually took over half another school at Tillington, didn't we, councillor Price, which was amazing really. So we've got a satellite of two, we've got the main school, which is Marsham, which is the one we had built, and a satellite with an old school. So these, the places that are required for SEM are going up exponentially. So the parents who want their children to come to Marsham are in a very difficult position at the minute with the places because we are oversubscribed, to put it bluntly. So as the county is moving towards building a new SEM school, I believe, in Rusleigh or somewhere, John, we've got a major problem with children at the minute. So it'll be sorted out in the long run, but the parents will have to realise that they can't just have the places they want. the places they want for their SEM children. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Paul Northcott.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is a great news story, I feel. Regardless of where you sit in terms of development, the things that need to happen to support businesses bringing their money and investment into Staffordshire, there has to be those underpinning infrastructure grounds to support it. In the rural area particularly, we're not surprised that parents wish to settle in the more leafier parts of Staffordshire. And development, we've seen much of that in my particular division. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the organisational team at the school and thank the cabinet member who's worked with tenacity to develop extra places, mainly in my division, to satisfy the new figures brought by housing development in the rural area. So it's a bit of a chicken or the egg syndrome which comes first, but I think this is integral to the success of Staffordshire. And we've heard this morning our leader talk about the excellent major investment that's going to take place, hopefully in the future, and continue to do so. And without that infrastructure support of making sure these places are available, this is absolutely fantastic news that we've actually built on the success of previous years. And that goes down to the, obviously, the officers and the cabinet member for schools. So I wish to put on record, this is my last council. I've enjoyed the ride and I've particularly enjoyed working with councillor Price to make sure that we deliver for the residents and children of our county. Thank you.
councillor Paul Snape.
Mr Chairman, as the governor of Catholic College, Carlin Griffin, Cannock for 12 years, I know the impact that this item really has on schools. Working on perhaps seven or eight different criteria to get a child into a school, it also has a great impact on the parents. I had a great nephew who changed from a primary school this year to a senior school, awaiting for that result to come out. I know the impact it had on his family. Waiting, they wanted to go to what they believed was the best school and they put him in for Carlin Griffin, but he was about number six on the criteria. So he wasn't in a feeder school, whatever, so it was difficult. But he got in there and he's loving every minute of it. So when we look at, it only looks a small item there, but there's so many people across our county every year, and this is a yearly thing as we know, the transfer schools, it is so good that we get it so right on so many occasions. And it is down to our admission team. It is down to the cabinet member and other members of cabinet who make the school place available. And I'm just so pleased that we as a county get matters like this so important, that are so important, correct on so many occasions. We know across the country, there are people who moan on a yearly basis because our councils don't get it. We get it, we put the effort into it and I'd like to thank everybody for all the hard work that has gone in this year and all the preceding years in helping families and schools. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to speak on this, the all-through school at Rusley, which does fall very much in my division. And I didn't speak on the previous item to obviously say about the investments in schools, because to me, what's important here is having those places available for local people, for local children. And touch wood, and I hope I'm not tempting, but the only problem I've got at the moment is parents who chose the new school but have got the Rusley school at the heart. So we're not talking about sending our children to Cannock and Burntwood and Litchfield. We are talking about sending our children to the nearest school to them. So it's, in a sense, it's a healthy complaint, but obviously they'll be wanting the best for their children still. But I'm so grateful for that investment and for the push on the Rusley school, for what the county council has done and through the cabinet member's leadership on it, because the last two, three years have not been well. And it was one of those, you know, what have I come into this for? Because it was a barrage for three years, especially with the delays and the possible, you know, not having that all-through school. So we're now seeing the fruits of hard work and there's still a lot of work to be done. The school still isn't finished and the network for highways is not finished. But it's going very much in the bright way and I'm just so grateful just at the moment to councillor Price and all those involved. And it is a good news story. It really is. Thank you.
councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you, Chairman, and again, thank you everyone for your comments. The Rusley school site was very difficult to get off the ground. I know that the chief exec and the leadership of Cabinet as well did an awful lot of work to make sure we kept that on track because the residents of Rusley deserved a second school through population growth. Now, some of the facts around this, particularly about offers are really interesting. So, I mean, 8,262 offers went out for Staffordshire secondary school age pupils for this year, which is a phenomenal amount considering we have a population of schoolchildren of roughly around 126,000, which is again a substantial amount. As some of the members have pointed out as well, first choice places, 91.9%, up on last year. Without the capital schools programme, of course, and making sure that we had those areas or those places within the schools in the right places, we would not be able to achieve this. So it's the school organisation team as well as school admissions who not only have to work really hard to make sure we get this right in the year, but actually have to have the foresight to see population growth as the years come forward. And it's quite an art. All districts exceeded the national regional average in terms of first preference outcomes. Again, that's down to the hard work of this council and the work we've done on our capital schools programme. Nearly 99% for one of the top three preferences. I mean, that is phenomenal when you consider the size of the county that we have and the rurality. National regional average is 96%. We have far exceeded that as well. So I just want to pay tribute to the school organisation team and particularly around the work that the school admissions team do year on, year out to make sure that we achieve these really high figures and for the support that both members and Cabinet have given as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the final item, what is quite a short leader statement. Item nine, which is the History Centre has a strong future. councillor Gillian Pardsey.
Thank you, Chair. The Staffordshire History Centre sits very proudly in my division here of Stafford Central Chair. It's a very impressive showcase of Staffordshire's history and a way of preserving it for future generations. And I also have to say that I've had several residents who have come up to me and told me about how much they've enjoyed their visits there. For those who were invited to the official opening, I hope you all had a very nice time, yourself included, Chair, and I would like to know as to why I was not invited to the official opening, Chair. Thank you.
councillor Jenny Sylvester Hall.
Many thanks, Chair. In the report, it states about the Staffordshire story and that's something that I would like to take a moment just to say a couple of words on. All of you, as you made your way into the chamber this morning, would have walked past the recently displayed photographs, pictures, the black and white images displaying the pictures of notable women from Staffordshire of yesteryear, covering a range of areas including politics, farming, nursing, teaching and more. As well as the photographs, you can also read descriptions of their contributions to the communities within Staffordshire. Last Saturday seemed like an ideal opportunity for me to spread the word about the recognition being afforded to these women and also the invaluable contributions that they made back then to where we are today. And that's all of us. So if you haven't had opportunity to do so for the Staffordshire Story Extension, take a closer look as you make your way out of the chamber. I invite you to do so. It's an absolute fascinating read. Thank you.
councillor Paul Northcott.
I'll take this opportunity to plug the History Centre because I think it is definitely a destination for people to visit if they're in the area. But I'd like to make a shout out for the council and Staffordshire's a brand. We're looking into using our assets across the county to court film production crews, to look at our assets, to visit those and to use these assets. And I think if their scouts go to the History Centre, I think they'll find out the rich history. And I make a shameless plug for one that's in rural Newcastle and also Newcastle Central itself. And that's the picture which councillor Sylvester Hall alluded to, the pictures in the gallery. And I'll have to say, Red Fanny is probably one of my favourites, Mr Chairman. It just goes to show the history that underpins this fantastic county. And maybe that's something that councillor Hotfield and myself will get into once we leave the council in terms of our film careers and maybe an extra or a leading part, who knows. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
councillor Caroline Trowbridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and good morning, everybody. I wasn't going to speak on this subject, even though the libraries in this town are fantastic. And I have to thank Victoria Wilson for all the energy and money that she has bought into libraries in Staffordshire. But I've been a trustee of the William Salt Library, now the History Centre, for the last eight years. So sadly, last week, week before, I had my very last trustee meeting. And at that trustee meeting, I was asked, would I stay on as a trustee in my own right, which is so fantastic, which shows how I've been involved with the William Salt Library for the last eight years. I never once said, why wasn't I invited to the opening? I absolutely thank the chairman for doing his job as a chairman and representing us all at that opening. And I just wanted that on record. Thank you, Mr Chair.
councillor Philip Atkins. Are you there, Mr Atkins? Thank you so much.
I was just, I was going to say, thanks to all the staff because this isn't just something that happened like that overnight. I can remember the first conversations about a History Centre probably about 10 or 12 years ago and putting the bid together, the premises, William Salt Library, Shire Hall, extension on the rear of the existing Art and Archives. You know, we were in the bid, we weren't in the bid. If we did this, we could do that. And this isn't just something that happened overnight. This has been a lot of hard work by our staff and officers, particularly our head of Archives and Services, Joanne Terry, who is really, really part of, you know, the driver behind this. But I'd also like to say, Chairman, that the archives is really good. If any of you, when you're standing there and have got some old papers that you want to get rid of, it's an ideal place to take them because there is a history and that relies on people donating documents and everything else. And I know when I moved house, I brought about 11 or 12 boxes down of deeds and all sorts of things which they're scrambling about and looking at and old invoices from 1942, would you believe, that I found in the attic. So there's all sorts of things, you know, that you can hand in, some unpaid bills, you know, and not that the family didn't pay them. But anyway, you know, despite all that, I'm really pleased that, Chairman, the opening went ahead. And I wasn't really expecting an invite and I didn't get one. But, you know, thank you very much.
Members, I have seven speakers still left on this item, which I'm quite surprised at. Members, can we look at this item as a celebration, a point of celebration, please? I'd really appreciate it. It's a fantastic achievement for our county. Let's talk about that. councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say, like Caroline Trowbridge, you know, I've been a trustee years ago on the William Salt Library, yeah, but this is a, the History Centre is absolutely fantastic. But now I'm also sitting on a trustee committee to do with the History Centre and we're trying to raise money, not a great amount of money. So if anybody wants to invest any money into the History Centre, then please get in touch with Merthyr Tonkins, who is actually organising this. So it's an item moving forward. And like myself, I'm not shouting about not being invited either. It wasn't political, just to make the point, it wasn't a political situation. So thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you. So as I say, don't forget.
councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. How pleased I am to see these portraits of women as we walk in through the corridor, particularly Mary Blag from Chittle, who was absolutely groundbreaking. And in fact, the organisation outside did a fantastic exhibition of her contribution to astronomy in the local church. But also, of course, Jenny Lee, who is a fantastic firebrand from Cannock. And I'm hoping too that perhaps, looking around these esteemed gentlemen, that maybe one day we could have an esteemed lady in a portrait. And I wondered if there were any plans to do just that, because I get a bit fed up actually seeing all these esteemed gentlemen who I have very little idea about. So I'm very pleased that there are notes on the portraits of women downstairs to tell us what their contribution is. Because actually, you know, if you ask me who this gentleman was, William Hennig, I mean, I have nothing, I have no idea what he did or what his contribution is. So I would ask perhaps that group that's looking at those portraits to perhaps give us one or even two, even two portraits of esteemed ladies. That would be, it would really lighten the atmosphere in here, I think. And I would propose that that should be taken forward by the next council. But my colleague, councillor Bedezy, raises the issue of not being invited to the History Centre. I was invited to the opening of the new indoor market at Leake with Kelvin Fletcher. And it was a lovely opening and it wouldn't have occurred to me that I wouldn't be invited because it's in my patch. So I find it very odd that when something is in your particular division, that you're not invited. And I perhaps would look to maybe the chief executive to clarify exactly what is the established protocol for inviting councillors, whether district borough or county councillors, to an event which falls within their division. It just seems very odd to me because I believe that also, that councillor Ashford was not invited to the opening of Burton Library. And I don't think, I don't know if that's a coincidence, but I just would like to get to know what the protocol is because we all want to celebrate the History Centre. We clearly do. And it's, it's an amazing place. And I'm looking forward, you know, to spending some more time in there. But it seems to me a basic courtesy that the local member should be invited. Now, if that's not the case, please clarify because it worries me that this is not just a coincidence. a coincidence, that two Labour members have not been invited to events in their patches. Thank you.
Members, I did, I did actually say, let's talk about the History Centre. And I'm going to be quite strict about that now. I allowed you to say your point and you've done that. Now we're going back to the History Centre and we really are. I'm sure if the chief executive wants to answer in writing, I'm sure he'll do that. I'm sure if the cabinet member wants to pick it up, I'm sure she'll do that. But for now, we're not, I'm not allowing this debate to be hijacked by something else. So the reality is, we will talk about the History Centre. It is a fantastic achievement for this council. It is a fantastic place. When other places are being closed down, we're expanding those. So I'm going to call councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. A short time ago, I spoke about the 10, 11 year olds in the county going to places. We have some great universities in our county and having a History Centre where, I'm a graduate in history, where you can go while you're doing your degree to get all your research done, the archive sent, et cetera, is a wonderful, it is a great centre. I also sit on the Crow Panel, Constance and Rights Way, which is legally based with the history aspect. We're talking about documents that were written and filed 1803 or whatever under various acts. This centre is not just about tourists, it's about getting people into the county to study and then hopefully remain in the county, bring money into the county, make our county better. And that's what this History Centre is all about, as well as what it does from the outside. It's a nice place to go and visit. It's a great place for graduates and people who have studied history from all over the world to come and see how great we've been as a county. And the people on this wall are great people who have represented our county. And I think if the Labour opposition wants to know what anyone does, she can go and sit in the archive centre or in the History Centre for a couple of hours and it'll tell her all about it. Thank you.
Councillor Markson.
And good morning. I've visited the History Centre on a couple of occasions and found it to be an absolutely fascinating place. And it's absolutely fantastic that we can have something within the county that showcases all the history of this great county that we live in. I was fortunate enough last week to go and unveil a plaque at Lepers Well in my patch that had been, by volunteers, been restored. And that's just a very, very small bit of history, but the whole of the county is covered by those fantastic things. I'd also like to make mention of the fact that children and young people can make use of that centre and engage there so they get an acknowledgement of the history of this great county. But in particular, I just wanted to pay credit to my cabinet colleague councillor Wilson for the hard work and dedication that she's put in about the History Centre over the last few years.
Councillor Jill Hood.
We've got some great schools in stone. We've got a three tier system which works really, really well. And it may think, you may think I'm going off piste here. I'm not. I've just noticed on social media that my grandson, who goes to a middle school, is almost lying on his back, looking up with the virtual reality goggles on his face. And he told me that he was looking at a pyramid, so he had to look right the way up. We're looking forward to our children coming to this History Centre so that our children can see what Staffordshire is all about and in particular, our county town. And Chairman, I hope you'll indulge me ongoing off piste here for Janice Sylvester Hall. I don't know whether she's seen it today, but they have announced that there is a single pill for endometriosis, which is an amazing accomplishment. And I know that your paper, our paper, contributed to that. So what better person than to have in a portrait on one of our walls than Janice Sylvester Hall for all her hard work? Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sure we will note that in a minute. Thank you, councillor Hood. Councillor Janet Eglund.
Thank you, Chairman. While my colleagues are boasting about their members whose pictures and portraits are in the corridor downstairs, I'd like to do my little bit for Lichfield, if you don't mind, sir. But one of the portraits downstairs on the corridor is Mary Shaw. She was the first female mayor of Lichfield in the old days when it was rural. So I'd like to say thank you very much to this, my colleague, for drawing everyone's attention to the people, the gentlemen pictured around this wall. And at least we've got some representation down on the ground floor, but that's where everybody comes in. So who knows, they probably see more of them than they see these guys sitting on our walls. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Ian Parry.
Thank you, Chair. Personally, very much support the idea of a rehanging in here. It's really long overdue. I do believe these people were probably members of the council, so I guess that's the precedence. But I'm sure there are lots of suitable former members of this council that could be hung. I made this place a little bit brighter than it is now. I was thinking hung, thought hung would work. I mean, there's going off piste and there's going off piste, isn't there, Chair? The History Centre has a history and really I just rise because I wanted to actually just highlight and pay tribute to one of our officers, Joanna Terry. Joanna and I, while I was serving on the trustee board of the William Salt when it was a history gentleman's club chaired by John Jifford, lovely man, lovely man, but it was very much a gentleman's history club with people writing the Victorian history of Staffordshire. And it was very academic, it was very exclusive. I remember going to the William Salt Library itself, knocking on the door, the door opens like something from a Charles Dickens novel. Somebody pokes their head around the door and say, are you a member? And if you're not, the door closes. You know, if you think about that, and this council, these taxpayers were providing money to this William Salt Library. They were subsidised, overly subsidised, in my view. So the leverage we had to use to get the William Salt Library to understand that a floor that does this when you walk across it, that was riddled with damp, that was about to fall down, was no place to keep precious historical archive and that something needed to be done. But the gentleman's club wanted to remain a gentleman's club. And Joanna Terry, aided and abetted by me, was the one, I think, that was able to fight that battle very well. She stuck to her guns really well and I praised Joanna for the work she did. It was a stressful time all round. But eventually, the agreement was met to sell the building or to do something with the building and for the opportunity to leverage what we were doing to get that National Heritage Lottery Fund grant to be able to build what is now an outstanding asset, an outstanding asset. And it took those early stages of unfreezing this attitude about what the William Salt was about and how it could contribute and be built within a new archive for the county was a remarkable period. And again, I'll mention it again, well done to Joanna Terry.
Councillor Victoria Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, members. Just to address a couple of the queries that have been raised before I sort of start gushing about my wonderful History Centre. In terms of this room, we have investigated and we have tried to put hangings up of female, notable female people from Staffordshire. That work is ongoing. I have to say that historically, there weren't many of them that were actually painted. Believe it or not, it was more, I'm not going to say the Faris Ex, the opposite to that, that had the funds to have their portraits painted. Also, this room, because of planning regulations, there are difficulties as well with swapping these paintings over. But that is work that's ongoing and hopefully going into the next administration will be able to investigate that a little bit more fully. In terms of the people that were invited to the History Centre opening, we invited the mayors and the chairs of the eight districts and borough councils. We didn't invite local members. We decided that as it being a county service, we invited people representing each council for Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent. I won't go into that much further, but we can provide an answer in writing. I believe the leader may want to speak to that point. So I'm going to actually go back to the agenda and to the wonderful History Centre itself, which is a marvel, isn't it? Eight point seven million pounds. We were helped, of course, with our friends from the National Lottery Heritage from Stafford Borough, Staffordshire County Council contributed, as well as other donors as well. And I'm absolutely delighted at the progress of the History Centre here in Staffordshire. As with our fantastic nationally recognised library service boasting 43 front doors to our county council, so is the History Centre, free of charge to access. Our library service, just in case I haven't mentioned it often enough, is something that we're so proud of that other local authorities are unfortunately, in some areas, doing away with. As a contrast to that, this county council is investing a further five million pounds into our library service. That's five million pounds into the library service, eight point seven million into the heritage service, 18 million into our countryside estate. We're doing a great job here at Staffordshire. We're able to offer our residents a window into the past in our History Centre. And as I said before, it's free of charge. So if there are any of you here that haven't already been to see it, go and spend an afternoon just across the road at the History Centre. It's absolutely phenomenal. Now, as we welcome our culture strategy into this local authority, it really reinforces the theme that we adopt, that of community and culture, which really cuts through every element of the work that we do in this space. And I'm absolutely thrilled at the recent recognition of International Women's Day last Saturday and obviously International Men's Day, which is every other day of the year. I was just checking if anyone was actually listening. And I'd like to pay tribute to councillor Trowbridge and councillor Sylvester Hall for the work that they do, as well as councillor Edgela for the work that we all do actually in recognition of the work women do in this county. It's been the honour of my career to represent the citizens of this county. And as we welcome our 5,352th visitor at the last count, well ahead of schedule, actually, I'd like to give my very, very great thanks to this council, to all our officers, notably Joanna Terry, who's put her absolute heart and soul into this project for well over seven years, and to our volunteers, because the volunteers are what make this work. So I'd like to pay tribute to them. Going forward, I'm certain that we'll continue to put our residents, past, present and future, at the heart of everything that this council does. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just rise to acknowledge the concerns of councillor Pardaisi and also expressed by councillor Charlotte Atkins about invitations to events. I will ensure that in future, when events take place, that local members get invited. There is a certain sort of protocol to do with countywide assets and who gets invited to those, and councillor Wilson has referred to that. But notwithstanding that, I do think we should make an amendment to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Will you accept my apologies whilst I'm on my feet for the fact that you weren't invited? I'm sorry and I'm sure we can make sure that you do get a special visit so you can see what's going on there. Just in terms of the women's images in the entrance, councillor Egan's quite right, they'll get seen by far, far more people than these old duffers in this room. I would also say that it's not an excuse, but I understand that this place is Grade Two Star listed, which means you can't even polish a door without planning permission. So I'm not quite sure what, how it works with the images, with the portraits on the wall. I just would like to point out that the first female chairman of Staffordshire County Council was councillor Erica Baylis of the Conservative Party. The council has existed for, at that point, it existed for what, 120 years by that point, Philip? And it didn't matter who'd been in control before that, no woman had found a way into the chair. The Conservatives took control in 2009 and the first thing we did is put councillor Erica Baylis in the chair for two years and she did, it may have even been three years, and she did a wonderful job. So maybe it's her portrait, I'm sorry councillor Sylvester Hall, it might not be yours, it might be her portrait that goes up. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, members. I move that report be received. Is that okay? Okay, shall we concentrate? I move that report be received. Thank you so much. Moving on to item six, devolution and local government reorganisation. I'll start again. Moving on to item six, devolution and local government reorganisation in Staffordshire. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of the report, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I move consideration of the devolution and local government reorganisation in Staffordshire report. Fellow councillors, I'm probably the first person to stand up to try and do this within this authority since 1973, 74. So it's something that happens once every 50 years or two generations. It is a rare thing indeed that we have to do and we've been told to do it by government. Can I be clear before we get going? Two-tier working in Staffordshire works. During the course of the pandemic, we proved the efficiency of two-tier working. There is simply no way that we would have been able to get the support out to the businesses across Staffordshire as efficiently as we were able to. There is no point, there is no way we would have been able to get help out to the vulnerable and those that were shielding as efficiently as we did during the pandemic. And to me, having been a district councillor for 20 years, and not now, it proved that the two-tier system really, really works. Our starting point, my starting point, has to be what's in the best interests of Staffordshire when we consider this proposal. When you sit here in this chamber, you are a Staffordshire County councillor. You might also be a borough councillor or a district councillor or a parish councillor. But right now, in this chamber, you are a county councillor. It is vital, when you consider this, that you consider what's in the best interests of the residents of Staffordshire, whether those residents live in Newcastle, in Flash, Kimber, Tutbury, Lichfield, Ecclesham, take your pick. It is what's in their best interests that should guide our decisions. You might be tempted to stand up during the course of this debate and say, I don't want this to happen, it shouldn't be happening. But that's rather like trying to be like King Canute, standing by the seashore. You're not going to stop this tide from rising just by shouting about it in this chamber. It's also important to recognise that this document is, to all intents and purposes, a placeholder. It allows us to submit something to government by the 21st of March as we are required to do. To not do so would be irresponsible because I've said a moment ago that your role here this morning is as representatives of Staffordshire. I think we have a responsibility to submit something to government to express what we believe at this point is the most appropriate thing for Staffordshire. This just gets us past the boundary of the 21st of March, no more, no less. What we will do is after the 21st of March, we will spend time talking to our communities, listening to our communities very carefully, talking to our partners, listening to our partners about how we can make a new arrangement as successful as it possibly can be for the future. Because our proposal goes in on the 28th of November, when the final deadline for submissions into government for the new into government for the new arrangements are submitted, we want to do so on the basis of really, really strong evidence. What will work, not just now, but also in the future? All of you will know that across England, there have been instances of reorganisation in order to solve financial problems. And what has happened to those reorganisations to solve financial problems? In many cases, they've lasted less than a thousand days or three years, that's all, before they've hit the buffers, before they're back in exactly the same problems as they had before. Because at their core, those reorganisations were a short-term fix to a structural problem of the original authority. If decisions hadn't been made by the original authority, then they're not going to be made in the future. The reason why this proposal is as it is is because collectively, whether you like it or not, we have, as a group of councillors, made decisions to make this authority sustainable. You may not have voted for it in this chamber, but in scrutiny committees, you've helped shape the direction that this authority goes. I look, for example, to councillor Yates, who is particularly useful in his contributions at scrutiny committee. He's not a Conservative, he's from the other side of the aisle, but contributes to the way this authority runs because he is a Staffordshire County councillor first and foremost, and his political allegiances fall by the wayside as we think what is the most important thing and the most relevant thing to do for Staffordshire. I'm going to now just talk briefly about the two forms of proposal that we're dealing with here. First of all, we're dealing with the creation of a strategic authority. What is a strategic authority? It is a new tier of government that will sit above the county council level, the current tier that we operate at, and it will require us to have a mayor. The reason why we would support that is because the offer that government has made for devolution, that is to say, the powers that we can have locally through the office of a mayor, are almost irresistible. It will allow us to have a say on infrastructure, planning, skills, health, the things that really matter to the residents that we represent. So to say, you know what, we don't want a mayor, would be wrong-headed, because it provides us with an opportunity to have a say over our area. Logically, the strategic authority that we are talking about, because the government has defined those strategic authorities as needing a minimum of one and a half million people, logically, we would say it would be Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent. Why? Because we have Staffordshire Police, which covers Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent, we have Staffordshire Fire and Rescue, we have Staffordshire Health, which covers Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent. So administratively, it fits quite neatly. However, government has also made clear that there should be no gaps in the map, and we know that Shropshire and Telford may well need to form part of a wider strategic authority so they get the same opportunities too. And this proposal has sufficient flexibility in it to allow us to accommodate a wider strategic authority, should it be needed. So I would recommend to you that the strategic authority, initially composed of Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent, but with the flexibility to be expanded to include Shropshire, Telford and Reckon, is the one that we would move forward with and start to do investigations. I turn now to the reorganisation of local governments, and this is where people really start to bristle and people start to get very upset about the changes that are being proposed. I will repeat once more, we didn't ask for this. We have been committed to two-tier working, it has worked well in Staffordshire, but we are required to submit a proposal. Stoke-on-Trent City Council has already submitted a proposal, or has already approved an proposal. Because of the way the law is, that is, the Local Government Act two thousand and seven, once a proposal is on the table for an area, it gives the Secretary of State the opportunity to then determine that proposal. So we need to respond to it. The fact of the Staffordshire, the fact of the Stoke proposal, which sees a new unitary in the north of the county being created, which would consist of Newcastle Underline Borough Council, Stoke-on-Trent City Council and Staffordshire Moorlands District Council, the fact of that proposal creates a southern unitary automatically of the six in the south, the six districts and boroughs in the south. So I know that districts and boroughs across the south of the county are taking through proposals, as we speak really, supporting perhaps a southern unitary in their area. That is a result, a consequence of the Stoke proposal, not something that has come up separately and independently. So our proposal sees the creation of a single unitary on the footprint of the current Staffordshire County Council footprint. That is to say, the eight districts and boroughs and the county of Staffordshire becoming a single unitary. Before anybody gets excited and says, well, this is about councillor White empire building, I just want to disabuse you of that notion. This proposal will see the dissolution of Staffordshire County Council, as well as the eight districts and boroughs that constitute the county of Staffordshire. So let's just park completely, let's just get rid of the idea that this is all about Stafford. I hear it from colleagues in districts and borough councils, right, this is about the county taking over, nothing of the sort. What it does do is take me back to my starting principles, our starting principles, which is what is in the best interests of Staffordshire residents. Can we create a sustainable unitary authority? Are you going to make me sit down? No. Can we create a sustainable unitary authority on the footprint that is the current Staffordshire? I believe the answer to that is yes. But at the moment, all I have is a belief. Myself, the chief executive and others, will be spending, as long as I get in this role, looking at the evidence to substantiate the case. We will be guided by the evidence, let me be clear about that. We are not dogmatic about this. And if it turns out that an alternative proposal is better than the one that we've got, then it will be the alternative proposal we go for, because that will be in the best interests of the residents that we represent. So what am I asking you to vote for? Well, the phrase is often bandied around, isn't it, that we would be turkeys voting for Christmas to support this. We are not. We are serious politicians who've spent a lot of our life looking after our local areas and trying to improve them. And what you are voting for this morning is the contemplation of the future services that we can deliver for Staffordshire residents, we being the future authority, the new Staffordshire unitary. This, you are voting for, a placeholder, just a line in the sand, just a marker. Later on in the year, the new administration and the new councillors will have to vote on or before the twenty-eighth of November on the final proposal that goes to government. So before people stand and get too aerated about this, just think carefully about what we're asking for. We're asking you to allow us to step forward, to gather evidence, to think about what's in the best interests of our residents, and then, and only then, we'll be able to come to a conclusion. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor White. Councillor Philip White, will you second?
I can the motion and reserve my right to speak later in the debate. Thank you.
Councillor John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. Just briefly, we haven't considered, well, I haven't heard anything about parish councils in this. I was the chair of the parish council when Gordon Brown proposed all this in two thousand and four. We ended up with devolution to parish councils, the cascade more worked down to parish councils. We therefore put in place a village council design statement and a parish plan, which cost us thousands of pounds. It went to the borough council, I believe it still stuck on the shelf with about three inches of dust on top of it, because the whole thing was abandoned at the end of the day. So if the lowest tier of government, which is a parish council, is not included in this, we've got a problem. So we do need to interface with those councils to see how much work they will take on when this happens. Because the fear I have with some of this is exactly as it was twenty-odd years ago, which is that you're taking your local councillor away from the people, because you won't be able to get at them enough, and they'll have too much work on to do as it is without listening to constituents all the time. So I fear that we might have a serious issue with this. I agree with what councillor White's just said, all of it, and I think he's spot on with a lot of it, and I think it'll be, we'd remiss if we don't, because we've got to do it anyway, whether we like it or not. It's going to cost the country hundreds of millions of pounds to do what, and I don't believe in the whole substance of it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Francis. I have quite a number of speakers on this item, so please, let's have some brevity. Councillor Tom Loughborough.
I was just, before I came to the chamber, I looked up how old Staffordshire County Council was. Staffordshire County Council on the first of April was one hundred and thirty-six years old. As part of this proposal, this will cease to exist, and that's something I've had to think about, because public services isn't about what I want, it's about what, say, people I know, about what the people want. And I've had to talk to my, you know, I've had to wonder about this, because when we talk about local government organisation, I'm not closed-minded to the idea entirely. I don't like the idea, I was never a Matt fan when I was a young parish councillor, say, literal drawing Birmingham, no way, not happening. I have concerns about mayor authority from Shropshire to Chace Terrace, definitely, but the idea of, one principle I have is that Staffordshire should stay together. The idea that we should have borders, and I've read the Stokes Plan, that whichever in the south of the county, we don't have Stafford, South Stafford, Cannock, Lichfield, Tamworth? No, that's just, I wonder about how that would work. I also think about the north of the county, they'd have to take on the financial responsibilities to Stoke, and I see that on the news recently, the Staffordshire Moorlands, Newcastle, we're certainly not a fan of that. And I think that democratically, they should have a say. I also agree with councillor John Francis, parish councils, I know that in this report it does talk about the role of parish councils, but they're going to have to take on responsibility, which they, especially the size, we're talking eight hundred, almost nine hundred thousand residents, they're similar size to Foresties, Birmingham, where of course Sutton Coldfield is the only town council in the country to run high street regeneration. Do I currently think the parish council network in Burnwood could handle that? No, I don't. So we'd have to do some serious work. But I think that we have to accept that, and I had heard, I wondered whether I'd vote against this and vote for, say, but this is my last council meeting as a county councillor, and I have to consider that I think, an interim plan, other things may emerge, but to get the best for Staffordshire's residents, I think that this is a start, a starting point. A mayor for Staffordshire, I can see, I can definitely see a role in that. It's not something that anybody wanted. I remember the Staffordshire Leaders Board and every single, you know, leader of every single authority saying no to that. I'd like to know. I'd also like to know that my concerns for services, you know, and staff, you know, it's quite well known, I've had some troubles over my life, and that the staff here have supported me quite well. And I wonder about the people, you know, doing roles for, say, housing, Lichfield, Chasewater, the county, Cannock Chase, how, there must be our faults, because they didn't ask for this, and there'll be many members of staff, including this room, thinking about their jobs, about their security, and I think that that's something I bear in mind. And if this comes to vote, I will support it, because I believe that, I don't believe in splitting up Staffordshire, I generally don't. I don't think that that's democratically, and I think that if they had to do that, that should be done by referendum. But I don't think, generally, I think this will be a difficult proposal, but I think that Staffordshire, as it has before, I mean, during the pandemic, during many challenges over the course and before me, will get through this, but it's going to require putting aside the party hats and working together for Staffordshire's residents. I hope that's what the future councillor, and perhaps my advice to my successor is, this is a matter of to put down your party hat and vote on what residents want.
Councillor Conor Wolman.
Much, Chairman. This is generational change. It's said as much in the White Paper, in the Labour proposals. I've considered this plan as much as probably all of you have, and the impact is stark. The impact will be to local democracy, as councillor Francis has talked about, because we will go from eight district councils down to one county unitary. But I want to make a political point. I don't make many political points in this chamber, but I want to focus on why we're debating this particular plan. We're only here because of the Labour government's proposals to put forward local government reorganisation. This plan wouldn't even be before you. We didn't ask for this. Councillors behind me, councillors on this side of the chamber, councillor Philip Atkins, we've had many conversations about unitarisation. Every single time, it was absolutely clear that this council and these councillors did not want unitarisation, and as we've heard from councillor White, we thought that two-tier authorities are the right thing for Staffordshire. When I speak to local residents, does a resident ever talk to me about local government reorganisation? Do they think that it's right that this should be happening? Absolutely not. What they want is their bins emptied, their roads maintained and their streets clean. They do not want money spent on reorganisation. But not only that, Mr. Chairman, but this council is also required to follow Labour government rules and guidance. We've seen that in the White Paper, and we've seen it in the letters to this council, and those rules and guidelines mean that we have to follow unitarisation. It's not an option, it's a requirement. And the guidelines also state that the population of those unitaries must be, or should be at least, five hundred thousand or more. Now, however way you cut that, however way you cut the authority, whether it's a north and south unitary, whether it's an east-west unitary, or whether it's a county unitary and a Stoke unitary, the reality is that all of those proposals will impact local democracy, exactly what I've said at the beginning. I am reassured by the leader, Cabinet, have focused on getting the best deal for residents, and I will continue to hope that that happens and support that where I can. But no wonder illusion, and I want to make this message to residents who might be listening to this debate, that these plans are only on the table because of the Labour government's reorganisation plans. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Caroline Trobridge. Councillor Caroline Trobridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I thought there was a lot of people before me. So for the last eight years, I have loved sitting in this historic building and representing the people of not only Stafford, but Staffordshire. These chambers have seen some great debates. Every single one of us here today wants the same, and that is what's best for the people we represent and what is best for Staffordshire as a whole. My disappointment, as I hit the last few months as a county councillor, to see this so-called White Paper asking for, asking for us to take it on. It's not an ask, it's not a debate, it's not democracy. This is dictatorship. I really dislike what we are being told by the Labour government. And then to see Stoke-on-Trent City Council taking the lead is criminal. As vice-chair of Audit and Standards, vice-chair for the last eight years, so I've seen this as solid. For the past eight years, I've signed off some budgets, I've debated every single budget, and I've helped shape our finances, standing along with our fantastic offices here. And we have been a well-run, well-run authority for that whole time. I'm proud that this council has a financial, sustainable budget every single year, with a little per side for a rainy day, which it should have, and for roughly eight And for roughly eight hundred thousand people we represent, we have always worked hard to achieve our best. Stoke-on-Trent City Council, who represent under three hundred thousand of the 1.1 million, I use these figures very loosely, sorry, who live in Staffordshire, a council that do not manage their budget and should be bankrupt, but last year went cap in hand to their government for forty-two point two million loan to keep them afloat. This council, of course, Stoke-on-Trent, he's happy for devolution. I wonder why? Take more power to central government. Whoever is in power is wrong. It's wrong on every count. It's not good locally for anyone. So for whoever is the next leader of this chamber, hopefully, could be Alan again, but as there is an election in May, none of us know who is going to be in charge of this chamber in May. So the proposal put forward today, it's an absolute no-brainer for whoever's in charge. This cannot be by any single one of us, less than a hand up, and yes, we vote for this. And anyone who doesn't vote for this is not here to represent Staffordshire.
Councillor Ian Parry.
Thank you, Chair. Like everyone else, started position is cutting winter fuel payments was not on the ballot. Now cuts to welfare reform was not on the ballot. And local government reorganisation was not on the ballot. Nevertheless, this is a legitimate government and it is entitled to, if it chooses to reorganise local government. In fact, it doesn't even have to ask our opinion about that. It could actually just simply hand over the template for new local government reform. That's, that is, that is within their rights as a legitimate government. We don't like that. I don't like that. I guess none of you like that. Because it does feel as though it's being done to you. But this is not the time, I don't think. If, as I've heard repeatedly said, what is in the best interests of Staffordshire regiment, residents? What is in the best interests of Staffordshire residents? And how do we know? How do we prove it? How do we test it? How do we independently assure it? There's a few known knowns here, there's a few givens here, that whatever the replacement for the councils, district borough, county, whatever that replacement might look like, it ends at the borders of the Shire County of Staffordshire. That's the only thing we know. And the rest is what happens within that space. This is not the time for acquisitions and mergers. This is not going to get us there if we just see this as a modern day game of thrones. This is not going to give residents what's in their best interests if we are driven by self-preservation, contortionism and self-interest. This must be approached in an open-minded way, recognising that no one in this chamber or in any other council chamber in this county will automatically be a member of a future council. We have a level, we have a blank sheet of paper. Whatever that new council looks like, the elections will be, start again. So there's no kind of automatic assumption that anybody in this council is empire building, is trying to build something based around Staffordshire County Council. This proposal looks logically that the preferred option might be based upon a Staffordshire County Council footprint, but that will not be Staffordshire County Council, will it? It'd be something else. The other thing to bear in mind is, whatever structure we come up with, we've also got to think about how that structure gets operated. And what we've seen here in Staffordshire, certainly over recent years, when every council in this county was conservative controlled, every council in this county had balanced books, had good plans, was well-run, et cetera, et cetera. It didn't have to be like that. A different set of decisions would have left all of those councils, including this one, a different set of options, a weaker set of governance, could have put this council in a far different place. Point here is that, as they say, culture trumps structure. So within whatever else we, we or the people involved in, in the future, designing and agreeing and evidencing and assuring and independently assessing what that future structure looks like, we also need to think about how it gets operated and what kind of, what kind of governance, what kind of constitution, what kind of rulebook does it need to have to make sure that it is a well-run organisation as we have right now? So I think open-mindedness, this is not the time for geographic tribalism, that we don't want to be with them and they don't want to be with them. That's really not open-mindedness. We've got to actually assess every option and work through the evidence. Based on, there is clearly a limited range of options, a limited range of options, and some will be ones worth pursuing and some less worth pursuing, based on, again, accumulation of evidence and professional advice and not based on self-preservation, empire building or tribalism.
Councillor Graham Foot.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, in my division, by the way, this is my last time speaking in this chamber, I'd like to say thank you to all members on all parties, independents included, for the way they've conducted themselves in the last four years because it's been a very pleasant place to be and work. Uh, in my division, I've got five Labour Borough councillors and four of those I work with very closely for our residents. And I think it's really important, as Alan White has already said, that we put aside politics when it comes to working for our residents, our constituents. Not all residents are constituents because some people don't vote, but we still have to try and look after them. But really, I want to speak about myself in my previous career. So before politics, I was a high-end, very high-end programme and change manager. I've worked in both public sector on huge change and the private sector as a management consultant, advisor on change. I, I've looked at these proposals and I've been looking, thinking about this since Christmas when it was all, well, um, after Christmas, when I realised what was going on. And when I realised there is actually no option to stay the same, when that's off the table, I then suddenly realised that, A, we have to do something. So what's in the best interest of residents? And I've looked at the proposals, uh, there's two that I've read, i.e. the Staffordshire County Council proposal and the Stoke proposal. And I think in terms of, uh, what's best for residents, the Staffordshire County Council one is very, very workable. And I could see as a change manager that could actually be a reasonably smooth change. Yes, it would take two to three years, but I can see how it can work. However, when it comes to the strategic authority, whether that's the county of Staffordshire or the county of Staffordshire and the county of Shropshire, can I say that's going to be a much more difficult change proposal? Because all those decisions that Staffordshire and a lot of the borough councils have made over the, to make those difficult decisions so that we can set a balanced budget, that is going to have to be part of this change proposal by the strategic authority. And that's going to be a much more difficult opposite. So I do not want people to think that it's going to be easy to have a strategic authority because there's an awful lot of change to be done in, uh, in Stoke, in Telford and in Shropshire. So, but I absolutely support the interim proposal that's been put forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to be careful not to repeat what a lot of people have already said, so I'll be concise. First, I'd like to thank the leader and the officers who've put this two together. We got the first letter in December of last year and all this has been put together in really, really short time. I think there's three key things that we need to take from this. Um, the first one is that there is in there a commitment to localism and keeping politics local. So we represent the people on the ground. I think that's important. And then the other two things are the fact that we will do what is in the best interests of the people of Staffordshire and the people that we represent. And thirdly, that we will follow the evidence and we are prepared to make sure that our final proposal is evidence-based.
Councillor Mike Worthington.
Thank you, Chairman and members. Um, it's been a pleasure to be in this chamber for the last fourteen years. Uh, I've been twenty-two years as a district councillor and all that's going to be gone, all to win. Now, you write, Honourable Angela Rayne, if you read her statement, she says, "We will change our politics so that decisions are made with communities, not done to them." Well, crakey, she's doing the exact opposite. This has been done to us, something we haven't requested. The members of my community have not consulted. I'm busy at the moment delivering leaflets saying no to Stoke. Members of Staffordshire, Morelands and my constituency in the Chernick Valley, which is all tin, oak and all cotton, parts of shegel, do not want to be part of Stoke-on-Trent. Stoke-on-Trent, as we all know from the money they've had off the government already, are a failed, as far as I'm concerned, a failed council. And we don't want to be part of a failed council. So I'll leave it at that. Happy to support the motion put forward by our leader, Alan, and I'll support that in its entirety. Thank you.
Councillor Janice Westerhall.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, I don't know about yourselves, colleagues, but certainly the best analogy that I've got right now is that I'm water skiing behind an inexplicably fast speedboat, possibly at Chase Water, and I'm on two different skis. Now, that's certainly presenting a challenge for me, but not one that I will metaphorically shy away from or any other context either. There may well be some merit in the ambitions of devolution and local government reorganisation for some councils. Is this one of them? As a financially viable council here? Good question. The other point to joint working, as a member for Litchfield City North, we only have to look back a couple of weeks and you will have seen the national, local and international reporting of flytipping on an industrial scale in Watery Lane in Litchfield. Now, to see the response from those two councils at that time was something to behold genuinely. And a prime example of the collaboration between two tiers here and now. Now, I'm very clear as to the magnitude of the changes that have been presented. I do look at those lessons learned, which are referenced in the Devolution White Paper. I'm equally not averse to change. I also have been a change manager in the past as a civil servant. But it's also why I think it's actually farcical that the potential seismic impact on critical services to residents and communities that were presented in the Devolution White Paper on the sixteenth of December, then in a letter from ministers on the fifth of February, for us to be in a position having worked extensively with other councils and then go through this governance procedure to present an initial proposal on the twenty-first of March is farcical. Also of concern is the apparent lack of reference to the potentially pivotal positions of those parish council level organisations, in the White Paper in particular. And on that note, I am grateful for the response to my request for assurances from offices here that parish level organisations through the Parish Council Association have been added to the list for distributing essential communications and will be engaged in the preparations for the final proposal by the twenty-eighth of November. I am taking some comfort in the guiding principles that have been established. There is a commonality across those councils where I have seen them which fundamentally recognises the final structure's ability to serve its residents, our residents. Another of those guiding principles also reflects the necessity to fulfil the stipulation of a response by the twenty-first of March and states, "An early preference does not predetermine a final proposal." In light of such a tight turnaround to submit an initial proposal, the current White Paper's limited details, including a reference of learning lessons from elsewhere, which incidentally are also available here and now, combined with the stipulated numbers of five hundred thousand and 1.5 million, I will be eagerly awaiting a response from that initial proposal from government. I'll leave it at government and potentially not AI, as what we've been hearing today. And equally welcome the opportunity to feed into that final proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Members, I genuinely understand the importance of these debates and I'm not in any way going to restrict democracy, but I still have a screen full of speakers left. So I would ask you to be as concise as you possibly can. Councillor Philip Atkins.
Yeah, this is my fourth reorganisation. I can remember when I was first elected to the county council in nineteen eighty-seven, there were commiserations saying the county council was going to be abolished under the Conservative government. So this is something that you have to go through. Uh, I worry about the distraction that this will cause to business as usual. It has to be done. I worry about our staff, uh, the confusion this will bring to them, and in some cases grief, because they've got to settle life and how they go. I worry about the opportunism of others, which has been mentioned, such as Stoke, saying, "We'll have all this." Uh, if you've been bailed out by the government, it's not, "Here's the money and go away." Um, the forty-two million pounds that Stokes had has to be paid back by the sale of property. And somebody made a joke of, "Is Stoke worth that much?" And or they have a loan and they pay it back. You don't think that we're the only ones in this position because I've met the leader of Essex and East and West Sussex and various others who are going through the first tranche. Uh, Surrey, for example, has Spentbridge District Council, which made some stupid investments in capital, capital investments in London and owe a billion pounds. Thorack got themselves tied into some wind farms and owe another half billion. So where do these debts go? All of this will affect whatever else comes out at the end of it. The motion, the recommendation by the leader as he's put forward, I will have my full support because that's all we can do at this stage. But the new council, I do worry about. There will be a lot of new members. They won't understand this. They will go into place mode. They will go into tribalism. They will want this, that and the other. Where what we should be thinking about is the services that our councils in Staffordshire, two-tier, have delivered time and again for the people, the residents that we represent. That's why we are elected in a democracy. I worry about this government and what its intentions are because the strategic authority of Shropshire, Telford, Staffordshire and Stoke is the one and a half million. It reminds me of the work that went on with the West Midlands councils, with the shires around the urban area. We may end up having to work with Hereford and Worcestershire and Warwickshire and deal with things in a bigger way. We might have to work with East Midlands. Who knows? But it's down to one person, a mayor. How's that scrutinised? How's that dealt with? There are a load of issues here that need to be sorted before we end up with a mess, a financial mess, unable to deliver the a financial mess, unable to deliver the services that are needed. There isn't a single unitary that isn't owing money now. North Yorkshire is the only one that isn't, and there's an awful lot of, it's been upper tier done to the lower tier. I found out why Cumbria ended up in two. They didn't want the nuclear legacy in the east, in the west, from the east, they need to be won. Cheshire East and Cheshire West, a disaster in Cheshire East that they're still trying to sort out, because they didn't lose all the staff and make the cost savings. There's an awful lot of work that is going to have to be done after May the 1st. This is a good recommendation, set of recommendations for where we are today. But we have to do it from within our own resources, and we don't want to get that distraction, because the government, even last week, Jim McMahon said, "We haven't got enough capacity to deal with all of the bids that are going in." I know that I've just had it in my real-life job, that they said they haven't got the capacity to deal with the Sustainable Farm Initiatives, and they've had to, they've shut that door way down the road. I've seen it in further education, they haven't got the capacity, and yet the government is getting rid of 150,000 civil servants. I think they need to do a better job at making them do the proper job and get on with it, instead of doing things to people, they need to work with people.
councillor Derek Hookfield. Councillor Derek Hookfield.
That's right, we're on there, aren't we? Well, it didn't go green. Can I just say, Mr. Chairman? I'm really, really concerned about the whole lot. I've been involved in proposals time and time again. I was a union man. Change, I've seen all the changes you can think of. When they come with all the changes, what happens? Thousands of people get made redundant. How many officers, right, that have been involved that won't be having a job? And you've got to take all that in consideration. When you look at it stands at this moment in time, right, Staffordshire County Council, incorporated with all the other little councils, right, and it stands pretty well on its own, which has already been said, right? When you look at my area, which is Newcastle, Little Newcastle, the Royal Ancient Borough, take notice, right, they'll lose all that, all that could be taken away. The big argument that's going on, right, at this moment in time, right, is should we go in with Stoke-on-Trent and the Lick and Mullins? My understanding is that the Lick and Mullins are too bad off, that's my understanding. I know for a certain fact that Newcastle isn't too bad off, so they put us in with Stoke-on-Trent. You can understand Stoke-on-Trent sit there, their council flapping their socks off, because at the end of the day, right, the money that Newcastle have got, the money that Lick and Mullins have got, could end up in Stoke-on-Trent to try pulling out of it, because that's what it could be all about. And when you look at the government at this moment in time, at the proposals what they're putting forward, there's always a method and madness. They turn around and saying it's going to cost millions upon millions of pounds. Every time I see the television, right, the Conservatives, right, left the government, right, with all this shortfall of money of billions of pounds, 22 I think they said it was, right? Now, how can they turn around and say, right, of all this money that they're going to spend on changing the whole of the country and the political scene, how can they turn around and say, "We've got no money? We can't afford this, we can't afford that." And yet here we are, it didn't cost billions of pounds to change it all, right, where did we go? Now, at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, it won't make much difference to me, I mean, I've had my day, right, but these young'uns, right, I mean, they're going to be on a sticky wicket, because they won't know where they're coming or going. I can't make a decision on this, for the simple reason is, I'm making the decision of what's going to happen in 10 or 20 years. And in all fairness, I don't know what could happen in three or four or five years' time, because the problem might not even be here. And when it comes around, and it's going to come around again, and these young'uns, right, they take over on the councils, not just this council, but all councils, right, they're going to be in a very funny position to make a decision that affects their lives, right, for years and years to come, right? And I did a petition in Newcastle concerning the mayor.
Mr. Hookfield, I have given you loads of time on this. We are talking about this proposal, and we are talking about specifically the proposal put forward. I remind you of the leader's words, we are, and I'm really cautious about closing down conversation. I will allow you to finish, Mr. Hookfield.
I'll sit down as it is, right, because as all I'm saying, you've got to be very careful on what your decision is. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Hookfield. Yeah, I still have a screen full of speakers, which is right, because this is, this item is genuinely so important. Can I just remind members, are we talking about the proposal? That we are talking about the proposal? And remind members of the leader presenting this. Councillor Jeremy Peart.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to replay previous comments either in this chamber today, or comments I've made previously at the last council meeting, particularly those against the northern part of Staffordborough being subsumed into Stoke-on-Trent. But today is a big day. Stoke's submission signed off the dissolution of not just their authority, but nine others at the same stage. There is no perfect answer, because perfect was enhanced two-tier working. It'd been working well for a number of years, but on the flip side, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. What we need to do, however, is to be able to focus on providing services to support our residents. And in so doing, I am concerned about the impact on staff, and Mr. Atkins referred to that. We need to be able to provide services for some of the most vulnerable children and adults within Staffordshire, and I would encourage all our staff to focus on what they do best, the reason why they came into public service, which is to be delivering services to members of the public. I'd also like just to say that alone we are strong, but together we are stronger, which is why I will support the proposals today. Just moving the debate to a slightly different place, Health and Care across the county spends approximately £350 million a year, supporting 11,000 of the most vulnerable adults, both in terms of social care and in public health. So the thought of disaggregating our services and splitting those up and thinking that will be an easy job to do in even two years, without leaving any one individual behind who needs our help and support and deserves our help and support, is, I think, far-fetched. It is going to be extremely disruptive, and we need to be able to focus on providing services for our residents, rather than internal reorganisation. The final place I wanted to go, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, is just to pick up the strategic authority benefits, because I think it is worth focusing on those, because those benefits are significant, particularly when you look at all the important things that fundamentally underpin our communities, health, education, housing, all of those key services. And so having them within a strategic authority across a wider footprint, I think, is a really important place to go to, notwithstanding my points about local government reorganisation. And I look back at our corporate priorities and our corporate vision as a county council, and I'm not confusing the fact that the county council will not exist, but those three key priorities of being an innovative, ambitious and sustainable county, with access to more good jobs and sharing the benefits of economic growth, living in thriving and sustainable communities and being healthier and independent for longer, I think underpins some of the points about the strategic authority's ambition, and I certainly support that ambition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've been sitting here on this side, listening very intently to some very valid comments, I have to agree. In fact, I started off with just a couple of notes, I've got so many scribbles, I've had to rewrite, I've had to rewrite three times, because of the validity of the points which have been raised, not because of trying to make it up as I go along, you know, there's some very valid points which need a little bit of, perhaps not come back, but just adding to. Very supportive of the strategic authority, that's true devolution, we will have true powers come down from Westminster instead of being dictated to on high, and we've had some mistakes in the past administration. I mean, competitive bidding on levelling up was ridiculous, it didn't go to the right places, it didn't always go to the right projects, the timelines were too short, and we ended up thinking, "Oh my goodness, what have we got ready?" Dust it off, we haven't retired for 10 years, but we can make it work. So we need that devolution, we need the funding to come down, and we need the decisions to be made on where that strategic funding is spent in the locality. We've been talking about the A50 corridor, somebody mentioned the two roundabouts, we've been talking about developing strategic business parks. The other thing about what the strategic authority will have responsibility for and direct funding for is climate change and climate change and adaptation, which is obviously key, and we've all seen the results of that. We talk, a lot of the conversation is about short-term issues which we've got now, extremely important short-term, it to do with funding, extremely important short-term issues. But like the leader said, we're talking about a devolution, a local government reorganisation akin to 1974, which should last at least 50 years, and if it's done properly and works, hopefully beyond, well beyond our timeframes. If it's done badly, it probably won't last the next change of government at Westminster. So let's concentrate on accepting the fact that it's imposed upon us, and I will use that word, imposed upon us, but let's make it work, let's make that happen. I've been looking at the BAPs, I've been looking at who's pending, who's current, who's done this, who's done what, throughout England, and they must get to a stage where there's a tipping point, where in Westminster, when Westminster are being absolutely hammered, and I represent Staffordshire, Mullins on the Industrial Communities Alliance, which is the old coalfields group, which looked at the regeneration of old coal mining areas and old industrial areas, and they are hammering, hammering, hammering all the time with their lobby group at Westminster about longer-term local government funding. And I can imagine the new administration has come in, a little bit wet behind the ears after 14 years of being opposition, looked at the map and gone, "What does that kind of authority do? What's the difference between that kind of authority? What's the difference between that?" So in some respects, they've made the decision, I can't, you know, I'm paraphrasing, because I don't know, is they've got to a tipping point of let's finish it off. There doesn't also, there doesn't seem to be a great deal of pushback from the Parliamentary Conservative Party. Perhaps they're sort of sitting in the background thinking, "Well, we did sort of start this in the 1990s, and it did need finishing sometime, and Labour are clearing up this bit of mess and clearing up that bit of mess, let them clear up this little bit of mess, and then we'll reap the benefits later," which is what normally happens. That sounds political, but it's not meant to be political. Perhaps there is an understanding at Westminster that something needs to be done. And it's unreasonable in some respects that something needs to be done to such well-run councils, I will say that. But when you get to a tipping point, you get to a tipping point, you know, that does flip over. I do worry about the criticality of scale in the plan of leaving Stoke-on-Trent as an island. I think that's a worry, and I think that's been a problem with some of the smaller unitary authorities and some very small unitary authorities round the corner, and when they're dealing with send, when they're dealing with education issues and when they're dealing with social care, I do think you need a critical mass. And that's not to say, therefore, I obviously support the north and south split. I really am trying to behave as a resident, and this, the leader said, as a county councillor. And look, it's a solution which potentially works for everybody in a situation of changing demographics and potential growth, and the issues, the bigger issues which we've got to contend with, and see what would be the best fit. And sometimes I even think, you know, you could have a north-west, south-east, you could have a east-west, you could have whatever. Somebody said there was 14 combinations, and I think one of the other combinations, which potentially, I'm not throwing out any amendments or whatever, perhaps if we are going to be in...
Thank you, councillor, you've gone, yes. Thank you. councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't going to speak on this, because our leader has said it all for me, really. This is not about politics or individual thought, it's about what's best for the residents and Staffordshire as a whole. As a child, as a Catholic, my mother always told me, "Tell the truth and shame the devil." I was going to stand up now and ask what basically has just been said there. What was the views of the Labour Group on this? When our government, the last government were in power, there was many things they did which we didn't agree with, and often we'd have a blue on blue, we'd be honest and say we thought it was wrong, it could be this way, it could be that way. That was why I was going to stand up. When I pressed my button, nobody again off the Labour benches had pressed their button, because they go green when you press your button. At the last meeting we discussed this, nobody from Labour said a word there. We've got elections on the 1st of May, and the Mullins may be going. With Stoke, a bankrupt council, and I'm sure the people of the Mullins would like to know what their views of their councils are going to be when they get elected, if they get elected. Are they going to give all the Mullins' money to Stoke that they've paid in and make the Mullins bankrupt, as Stoke is? Because that's what will happen, they'll bankrupt Newcastle and they'll bankrupt the Mullins. So it is nice that Nigel Yates has said something, but what's he said? Nothing. He's spoken for five minutes, told us shut up at the end because he was carrying on, and he said nothing in those five minutes. It really would be nice to know what the leader of their party thinks, is this a good thing, what their views are, and how they're going to carry it forward, should they be re-elected the next thing. But no, we never get that from Labour, do we? We just get that it was all our fault for the last 14 years, and they're going to do nothing about it. So that is my view. My mum said, "Tell the truth," and I'm telling the truth as I see it.
councillor Philip Atkinson. Thank you, councillor Atkinson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. During my 30 years as a police officer, the most effective way of delivering policing was to keep it local and keep it simple, and it worked. I knew my patch, I knew the people that lived there, and we delivered effective policing. Much is the same about local government. I know Utoxeter, I know the people of Utoxeter. When I go out shopping, I do most of my work there, because people will stop me and tell me about the issues that are going on in Utoxeter. Other than that, Mrs. Hudson gets it when she's serving them in Tesco's. I'm a bit like a piece of Blackpool rock, I've got Utoxeter all the way through my body. I love that town, I love the residents, and I want to continue to represent them. Utcheter, people who've lived in Utcheter since they were born or been there as long as me, we call it Utcheter. So I've got to look at, what do I want to do for the residents of Utoxeter? What are they telling me? What's in their best interest? They want to be part of a rural Staffordshire, not an urban Stoke-on-Trent. So I will fully support you, leader, in your motion.
councillor Julia Jessel.
I can speak, Chairman. Comments have already been made by councillor Atkins.
Thank you, Julia. Councillor Jill Heath.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I wasn't going to speak, but I want to endorse what councillor Worthington said. The people of the Mullins do not want to be part of Stoke-on-Trent. I support the recommendations our leaders put forward, and in particular, I support the villages, the small villages in the very north of the county, and they are absolutely horrified by the idea of what's been put in front of them now. So thank you.
councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't going to speak, because I think most people who bothered to follow what's been happening in Staffordshire, Mullins would know exactly what the situation is, which is basically, we had a full debate at council, at a council assembly, it was unanimously agreed that a cross-party working group would be set up, including the independents. All the motions that were presented at that parish... All the motions that were presented at that parish assembly were referred to the working group to look at all the options. As the leader said, we are required, look at, look at the options and find out what is best for our residents, not for us, not for Turkey's voting for Christmas, but what we think is best for our residents. We don't have the luxury in Staffordshire Morelands of remaining as we are, simply because the former Conservative administration set up an alliance with High Peak, which has worked very successfully, but they decided in their wisdom, not only to cross a county boundary, but a regional boundary. So there is no chance of the Staffordshire Morelands existing as it is. We simply can't financially do it, it's not viable. And as a result, we have to embrace change, we have no option to do that, we don't have that luxury. We can't just come out with slogans, no to Stoke, no to Stoke, no to Stoke, because we have to agree what we say yes to. And that is exactly what that working group will do. My colleagues on the Staffordshire Morelands District Council will work across party to work out what the best solution is. So all this haranguing, all these slogans mean nothing. It means hard work between now and the end of November. I'm willing to put that work in, are you?
Councillor Mark de Ville.
Chairman, I, I, I wasn't going to be speaking, I will be extremely brief. Councillor Atkins rightly referred to the recent meeting at Staffordshire Morelands District Council where we did agree to work together, look closely at the evidence, look closely at the evidence, and work on the evidence. However, Chairman, I have to say that loud and clear at that meeting, right across the chamber, was an absolutely unified message, no to Stoke, for the reasons that other members have spoken about today.
Councillor, oh, you've finished, but what I was going to say councillor de Ville was we, you know, this is about this recommendation, not about Morelands, but I, I appreciate that this is an incredibly challenging debate, I, I genuinely do. So councillor Philip White, you reserve your right to speak.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, so this wasn't something I was expecting that we'd have to be debating in our final meeting of this, of this council term. What I was expecting, following the general election, following a long-term trend that we've had in terms of national governments view of how local areas should be governed, was devolution. I think that was well expected, the previous Conservative government had, had developed that in many areas, we expected that to come. What came as a big surprise was out of the blue on, I think it was the 16th of December the white paper landed, that local government reorganisation, which had not been trailed, was not in the manifesto, as I think councillor Parry said, was nowhere, suddenly appeared. And all I will say about that, colleagues, is that it's interesting that it appeared about six weeks after Rachel Reeves' disastrous budget, when it became apparent to government departments that they were all going to have to save some money, or at least be able to say at the next budget that they think they have a way of saving some money, a line item in a budget. And that sadly is what I think this represents, a handbrake being pulled, don't worry, we've got a way of saving some money, and then we have to do all of this as a result. Sadly, I think that's what we are dealing with here. Now, that's my frustration vented. What we have to do now, as responsible councillors, is we have to make the best of what we have here. Devolution, I'm all for, I think that's a very good thing, it's connecting decisions to local areas in a better way, and that's good news for us, as someone who lives and believes economic development in particular, I think we can do well with that, and there appears to be broad support for that. In terms of local government reorganisation, we have to make the best of that, and as the leader has said, we have to be led by the evidence on this. We've been required to put a placeholder in for the 21st of March, with our current views developed with very limited time, as to what is the most sustainable form of local government for our area, that's financially sustainable, that is delivering the services that many people rely on in the most effective way, it's also avoiding the disruption that comes from pulling those services out of areas and reforming them. We need to do all of those things, but the other thing that I will just mention, because I think it is so important, is these councils, however it ends up being formed in Staffordshire, whether it's a north-south split with roughly half a million people in the north and 650,000 in the south, or a county footprint of about 870, none of those, even the smallest of those, they're giant councils, there's no way that you can claim that they are local councils anymore. And so the other thing that we have to do, colleagues, is we have to work very hard and give great deal of thought and consideration to how we make sure there are connections to local communities in terms of how we make decisions in these successor authorities. This authority will be gone, as will Stoke-on-Trent City Council and the other eight district and borough councils. We've got to make sure that whatever comes afterwards has got those community connections as well, there's been a lot of talk about finances and structure, but I just wanted to make sure that communities was considered here as well. It's certainly going to be one of my key focuses, and I know one of the leader's key focuses in terms of what we deliver, and the final, final thing I will say is whoever hard this is for members, just give a thought for a moment to our staff, some of whom are here today, who have to continue to deliver services whilst working on these proposals that have personal implications for them. And so I just wanted to say an enormous thank you to you all, and to all of your colleagues, you do a wonderful job, and I know you will continue to do that in these challenging times. Thank you.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, members, for a good debate, it is clear that there's sentiment that's in the room, and I look to your support for the recommendations. Just a couple of one, points I did want to pick up on, first of all councillor Francis, early on in the debate, referenced parish councils, it is clear in the briefings that I've had from central government on this proposal since the 16th of December, and I will tell you, I've done nothing other than live, breathe, sleep, actually not sleep, local government reorganisation, because this stuff keeps you awake at night, because the implications of this are huge. Parish councils were forgotten. This has, parish councils have to be part of the solution, because after all this is done, we will still have three tiers of local government, it'll just be a mayor, an upper tier, and parishes, and we are going from an upper tier, a second tier, and parishes, still three tiers, but slightly different organisations. What will the role of the parishes be? We don't know. How are we going to feed that through? What responsibilities to connecting with their communities? And how much will it cost? To Thomas Luffborough Rudd, yes, Staffordshire is a very, very old county, but Staffordshire has also changed shape over the years. Reorganisation of local government is something that has occurred regularly over, over the decades and the century that precedes it. In the deputy leader's office is a map of the former Staffordshire, which includes Walsall, Wolverhampton, and other places, and I thought to myself at one point, why don't we just reverse it, get some tanks, roll into Walsall and say you're back, you're in Staffordshire again? I think that's a good idea. There, there are some, there are some really well-run small unitary authorities, and they're local as well. Telford is a well-run small unitary, Dudley, Walsall, they're well-run places. There has been talk of saying, well, Stoke was set up to be unsustainable, it was set up for failure, it wasn't, it wasn't, I'm old enough to remember when it was set up, and it was set up to, to write its own destiny, to succeed in its own terms, and it's clear that some of those small unitaries that were set up have succeeded in their own terms, and perhaps the solution is to say, well, can it succeed in its own terms, let's give it that chance. So you've got the proposals, I'm going to ask you to vote on those proposals, and you will, in your conscience, you will vote with your conscience on these proposals, this is not a whipped vote, you will choose to vote as you see fit and as, as you see best for the residents of the county of Staffordshire. I want to just finally, finally echo the words of councillor White as he concluded. There are 10 authorities that constitute the area that is Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent, eight districts and boroughs, the county of Staffordshire, and the city of Stoke-on-Trent. Many of people, many of the people who work in those authorities are thinking to themselves, how will I pay my mortgage if this goes ahead? Many of those, those people will be out of a job, and we should not be frivolous about this, we should not deal with it in a lightweight or shallow way, we should do this as seriously as we're doing it when we consider our residents, we do have to consider with sympathy and dignity the work of our staff. With that, Mr Chairman, I move the recommendation, move the motion.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me. Members, it is being moved and seconded, the recommendations contained in the report be approved, is that agreed? I'll take that as agreed. Members, as it's, it's, it's spot on one o'clock, let's break now, I will ask Mike to ring the division bell at about 2:05, we will start promptly at 2:10, thank you very Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. We'll proceed on to finish off this afternoon, I'm sorry we had to have an after, I'm genuinely sorry we had to have- Thank you councillor Francis. I'm genuinely sorry we had to have an afternoon session, we don't have very many. So we're moving on to item seven, which is the retiring members. The following members have indicated their intention not to seek re-election at the county council elections in May 2025, and will thus be retiring from our authority, or should be sadly retiring from our authority. Jack Abrams, Jill Burnett-Fortner, Janet Eglund, who was first elected in 2005, John Francis, who've also been around a while, been in, since 2009, Jill Heath, 1997, quite impressive, Jill. Derek Huckfield, Derek has served twice, with a gap in between, I presume this is the proper retirement councillor Huckfield? Yes. And it would, it would be, it would be a real treat councillors if councillor Huckfield ever ever listened to me again. I, I'm moving on, members, thank you. Councillor Graham Hutton is retiring, councillor Thomas Jay is retiring, councillor Julia Jesel retiring, councillor Jason Jones is retiring, councillor Tom Luffborough Rudd, councillor Johnny McMann, who has been, I have a huge joint area, and Johnny has been my partner for the last four years, I shall miss his wise council, councillor Paul Northgoat, councillor Jill Pardisi, councillor Cath Perry, who hasn't been able to be with us, was also elected in 2005, councillor James Salisbury, councillor David Smith, councillor Bob Spencer, councillor Stevie Sweeney, who was also elected away back in 2009, my, my very good friend who I'll miss intently, councillor Samantha Thompson, councillor Caroline Trowbridge, councillor Jill Waring, councillor Mike Wilcox, councillor Ian Wilkes, councillor Bernard Williams, and last but not least councillor David Williams. My, members, may I take this opportunity on behalf of the council to extend my sincere thanks to those members who are not seeking re-election in May for the service they have given to this council and to the people of Staffordshire. Between them, members, they have accumulated over 200 years, 200 years of public service to this county, and it is right that we pay tribute to them in, in, for the valuable contribution they have made to the communities they have served across our wonderful county. I'm sure that all members of this council wish to join me in wishing them well for the future. I should call the leader and the leader of the opposition just to say a few words, councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. In the present political climate, it's never easy to stand as a councillor and to serve, and I think that social media probably has a lot to be blamed for in that respect. So I wish everyone who is retiring a happy retirement, and thank them for their service. But I think it's a testament to the challenges that councillors face, that we have 26 people retiring, which is a very high number, and that 10 of those have only served one term. And I think it's not surprising therefore, I mean, in some ways it's not surprising because obviously the county council is coming to an end, but I do think that the pressures on councillors have, have never been greater. And of course, many of us don't know whether we will be retiring, because the verdict of the, of the electors on May the 1st will decide that. I'm obviously going to focus on Gillian Pardisi, to thank her for her service, for her commitment, and also for the passion and dedication and courage she's shown in this chamber, and the fact that she has amazingly delivered 100% attendance. I don't know how many other councillors can say that, I know that councillor Nigel Yates has delivered 100% performance, but that shows dedication, it's, it shows persistence, and it shows organisational skills apart from everything else. So I'll be, I'll miss Gillian, but we will of course remain friends, thank you.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I associate myself with the comments that you have made. It is tempting by members of the public to describe all politicians as the same, we're not. The trust that local people have in local councillors is far, far higher than they have in any other form of elected representative, and they trust us because we get the job done, and they trust us because we live within their communities, we come from their communities, and they know that, they know who we are and how they can get hold of us. It has been a changing landscape for councillors over the past 22 years that I've been a councillor. Social media didn't exist before, if people wanted to get hold of you, they'd phone you, they'd write to you, maybe even email you in those days, but now social media and the constant criticism, the rolling news cycle, that sense that you've got to get an answer to a problem immediately, the sort of Amazon-style type response to things, which is, I've ordered it, my pothole being filled, and I want it done yesterday, it's that sort of thing, and actually in the real world, it, that proves very difficult to deliver. To those who are retiring, you've endured it, you've made a difference, people will know that you have served, they will know that you've made a difference to their communities, and for that I am genuinely grateful. Before I come on to the, the three longest-serving retiring members, I just want to pay tribute to councillor Huckfield, who's become a friend over the past, since 2009 when he became, he first got elected, has become a friend. I have counted, there've been 13,726- I have counted, there have been 13,726, right? There have been three different political parties. And so he has to retire because he's run out of political parties to stand for. But I do, in all seriousness, want to turn to the three longest-serving members who are leaving us. That's Cath Perry, Jan Eglund, who started in 2005, both of them, and in particular, Jill Heath, who started in 1997. The point was made about the images here. Perhaps the three candidates going forward who might have their image—that you'd have to have a tash painted on, who could go up here—would be Cath Perry, Jan Eglund, and Jill Heath. To those longest-serving councillors who are retiring, thank you ever so much indeed for your service. You stand out amongst a group of many retiring who've done great service, but that length of service by and of itself is a tribute to your commitment to your communities. To the rest who are retiring, thank you. Thank you for your service. It is my great privilege, and I don't feel qualified to say thank you to all those councillors, because I just happened to be the leader at the time. It's my opportunity to say thank you to you all. So I wish you the best of luck in retirement. I know for many of you, you are so committed to your communities that even if you are not going to be a councillor anymore, I'm sure you'll be as John Francis keeps reminding us, chair of the local governors, or on a parish council, or part of a community's group, or raising money for your communities, or perhaps even just doing something as straightforward as being a litter picker. We've got Litchfield legends go around picking up litter in our local area, many of whom comprise of community-minded and community-spirited people. So thank you for your contribution. Best of luck for the future. And to the rest of us who are standing for election, good luck on May the 1st. I know not all of us will be returned. That's for the electorate to decide. And thank you to you, even if you're not successful on May the 1st. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor White. Item eight on today's agenda, the pay policy statement, 2526. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration for the report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move consideration of the pay policy statement, 2526.
Councillor Philill White, will you second?
Chair, I'll second that.
I have no speakers, and I would say you don't want to speak again, so— No, we still have no speakers. It has been moved and seconded that the recommendations contained in the report be approved. Is that agreed? Thank you. Item nine, which is changes to the constitution. Councillor Trowbridge, will you please move consideration for the report?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, please. Can I re— can I move this report, please?
Thank you. Councillor Cox, will you second?
Sir, Chair, reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. I have three speakers. Councillor Connor-Walmer.
Change number one in the report I was going to make, or at least at first glance, I thought that should be an amendment to that report on the point of removing him and himself and replacing the text with them and themselves. Having said that, having properly read the document, I don't think that is needed. The written constitution is the written constitution, and we can continue to refer to the chairperson or the chairman as whatever pronoun that they would like to be referred to as, even though it might state something different in the report. So on that basis, I don't see the need to propose an amendment at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Chair. On page 195, Constitution, section six, update to Cabinet member membership. I have to say, I am disappointed that the term "climate change" isn't included within any of the cabinet posts, considering that it's been acknowledged as an existential threat, if perhaps not this immediate generation, certainly the next, and considering the importance which the national government has given it within the new strategic authority regarding devolution. I do think—I would like to see personally that climate change is included specifically and clearly for the public as within the remit of one of those cabinet posts. Thank you.
It is in there, or have I read this wrong? It says Cabinet Member for Environment, Infrastructure and Climate Change. No changes, it says. No changes. Constitution, section six. Cabinet Member for Environment, Infrastructure and Climate Change. Is that what we're talking about?
Councillor Gillian Pardisi.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased—and I've always addressed you as Chair. I'm very pleased that the suggestion for change at the start is regards using gender-neutral language, Chair. That's very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Because you answered the question— do you want to speak again? Councillor Cox, do you require to speak?
Chairman, I'll—
Okay. I move that the recommendation in the report be agreed. Is that agreed? Approved? Is that agreed? Thank you. Item 10, the designation of section 151, Officer Director of Finance and Resources and Monitoring Officer and the County Solicitor. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of the report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move consideration of the report.
Councillor Philill White, will you second? I have no speakers. It's been moved and seconded that the recommendations contained in the report be approved. Is that agreed? Thank you. Item 11, report of the chairman of the Staffordshire Police Fire and Crime Panel. Councillor Peters, will you move consideration of the report, please?
Move the report.
Thank you. Councillor Jill Hood.
Thank you, Chairman. I would ask that you take this back to the police commissioner. We are going through a particularly torrid time at the moment in Stone, and it breaks my heart to say this. We have a group of feral young children. And it's been well documented in the press that one girl was assaulted on a Wednesday night, and then another young girl assaulted the night after by a pack of young people of a similar age. She was quite badly assaulted. I'm ashamed to say that in public, but that is what's happened. We have a beautiful new destination park in Stone. Unfortunately, it's been attracting this group of young people. And I would like to say this to Mr. Ben Adams, the Police and Fire Commissioner. Since he has taken our police station out of the High Street, we don't see police about. We do now, of course, now that this has happened, and I would like you to ask him, was it really worth the pittance that he's saved on getting rid of our base in the council offices and moving them down onto the A34 where no one has access to them? He's stepping up to the mark, and so is Chief Inspector Giles Parsons at the moment. He's doing an incredible job, and they are investigating every name given to them that has been involved with this. But I really have to question, does saving money counterbalance the lives of our young people? We always saw the police about in the High Street, and they were more than welcome, and there was a camaraderie between the young people and the police officers. That's gone. Please tell him that. Thank you, Chairman.
I have no further speakers. Councillor Peters, please come back at this stage, yes.
You'll be aware, perhaps, that we will see the introduction of neighbourhood policing in the very near future. Government legislation has specified that, and they will be embedded into the community. Now, people often say to me, "We never see a policeman." Well, maybe you don't. Maybe they're in plain clothes. Maybe they're doing something else. You will see a police officer in a car, or a PCSO perhaps, but you won't see a bobby walk in the streets now unless there's a real fracas going on, and that's unlikely to be the case. I'd encourage you in the future, moving forward, notwithstanding devolution, that you attend or get your residents to attend the Police and Crime Panel meeting. We welcome representations from people, and we can hear it firsthand, rather than hear it from your elected member, who may put a different spin on it. So if you'd like to consider that, I'd be welcome—I really would welcome you there if I'm still chair of that panel. But I've noted the point you make, and the next time I see the commissioner, I'll mention it to him.
I move that the report be received. Is that agreed? Thank you. Item 12, which is questions, understanding order eight. Members, the five questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the questions and answers will be taken as read. I will allow each question of five minutes in which to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. As always, I would remind members, no debate is allowed on these questions. Councillor Yates, to councillor Deville. Councillor Yates, do you have a supplementary? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, councillor Deville, for the answer. Obviously, this is quite a sensitive topic, with it being outside of school. Can I request that as part of the review which you mentioned in your answer, as a consultation—had a consultation with town and parish councils within the moorlands is done, so we can actually get a truly local democratic input? I'm very much aware that there will probably be an overrequest, but I think if we do that properly and we have a proper debate at that level, then a small but significant list which will impact and improve our residents can be put forward, if I could please request that.
Councillor Deville.
Thank you for the supplementary, councillor Yates, and the answer absolutely yes. I am supportive of this personally. I've spoken with you on this, and I've spoken with the district councillor on this, and that certainly will be put forward for future consideration next winter, and it will be considered during the summer months for operation in the winter. And it does give me a very brief opportunity, Chairman, to again thank our teams who are out in all weathers, every night. Three teams in the higher areas of the moorlands were out last night, and if I may just—I'm sure join all councillors in the chamber to thank them for the work that they do right through the winter, keeping our residents safe and keeping us all safe.
Question two, councillor Hood to councillor Deville. Do you have a supplementary, councillor Hood?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your reply, Mr. Deville. It actually says in the reply, "a feasibility study." Well, that makes me go cold, because it took me two years to get yellow lines in Church Street in Stone, so goodness knows how long this is going to take. But I am aware that the highways team are looking at the gyratory and the new configuration of the town, which will be welcome. And it also says, "in the short term." We're talking about people's lives here, families, children. We have many events in the High Street. We had a farmer's market where we had a car hurtled down the High Street.
Councillor Hood, it feels like a debate.
No, I do have a question.
I don't mind a little bit of a run-up.
I do have a question.
But I would appreciate if we could come sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask how long you envisage this is going to take? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Deville.
Thank you, Mrs. Hood. Thank you, Chairman. The officers are very serious about delivering this, as you know, and are supportive. I am highly confident, Chairman, that the new council will continue the work that's already been done, and I also assure Mrs. Hood and all members that whatever's done—and we take this issue very, very seriously—whatever's done will be the best for the people of Stone and the best for the businesses in Stone. And the work will continue with the new council, Mrs. Hood.
Councillor Pardisi to councillor Perry. Councillor Pardisi, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Chair, I do.
Thank you.
My question, Chair, is what sort of investigation is undertaken to ensure that our pensions fund is ethically invested? Chair, the county council constitution endorses responsible investment, and responsible investment explicitly acknowledges the relevance of socially responsible investing. That doesn't mean to say it doesn't take into account financial returns, which are important. But it also means it is considered alongside ethical goals. So that, Chair, is why I'm asking, as I did at the start, what is done to ensure our pensions fund is ethically invested?
Councillor Perry.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the question. May I compliment you? Unless your last meeting of this four-year council cycle, I've been the only person to ask a question on finance to me in the whole four years. So goodbye, but thank you very much indeed for the question. I will cherish it. In all seriousness, this is a serious question. I don't take it lightly. It's a very good question. It's a good challenge. But the county council's policy—sorry, pension fund, which is managed on our behalf, has to follow a responsible investment strategy. It's embedded within it. But I think your challenge is right, because I've made a similar challenge, and that is, what do we mean by that? Is my responsible, you're responsible? Is my ethical, you're ethical? So there are guidelines in this which are followed, and I think, generally speaking, that's what most pension funds follow. And you can see that. If you like, I'll send you the background information to what that responsible pension fund investment means. Thank you for the question.
Councillor Charlotte Atkins to councillor Price. Councillor Atkins, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Obviously, there's been a massive increase in the number of send pupils, but my concern is about the fourfold increase since 2016 of send pupils going into the independent sector at a vast expense to the county council. Now, why is that? Is that because mainstream schools are not meeting the terms of the EHCPs, or is it because the county council is not managing to ensure that mainstream schools are delivering on their EHCPs? You and I both know of a recent case that I raised with you about the failure of a school to support a particular pupil. Obviously, parents want the best for their children. They will push for an independent sector placement if they feel that the mainstream school—or indeed the special school—is not meeting the needs of their pupils, of their sons and daughters. So what I'm concerned about is that this escalation indicates some failure in the system to ensure that our mainstream and special schools are actually meeting those needs.
Councillor Price.
Chair, that is a really, really good question. One of them, of course, is around the capacity within our schools, and as you've seen from two of the items we've addressed earlier, that talks about increasing spaces in special schools as well. Another failure, of course, is the system that we have in place currently as well, and around educational healthcare plans and tribunals. We have some parents, unfortunately, that will see the more expensive, more glossy and shiny schools, regardless of the fact that they can all deliver, as well as their own schools deliver, an excellent quality of education for not only our send pupils, but send pupils within mainstream. They will want to go down that path. I mean, the other day, I was sat in a dentist's, and there was a magazine there, solicitors' company, talking about how they were going to support parents to get the best independent provision at anywhere between £10,000 and £100,000 a pop. Well, of course, as a parent of a send child, you clearly want the best, but I myself, who are a parent of a send child, who is in a mainstream setting. So this county is doing a lot of work to make sure those pupils who can learn in a mainstream set and are supported within an inclusive system. And we're still working with a lot of our schools who are not all-inclusive. Some are doing a wonderful job. Others, as you know, councillor Atkins, are not doing what they should be doing, and we need to make sure that those pupils remain in mainstream with the right support, freeing up spaces within our send provision to allow us to send the most vulnerable children to send schools across the county. And hopefully, that will start to see the reduction or the need for those independent places. A huge amount of work and a huge shift in attitude is required, but it is an excellent question, and I do appreciate it, and I'm more than happy to take this conversation out of this room, and we can have further discussion. Thank you.
And the final question, after four years, pulls to councillor Afshar, to councillor Deville. Councillor Afshar, do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, just like to thank councillor Deville for the reply and no supplementary. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Afshar. Item 13 on the agenda is petitions. I haven't been notified of any petitions. Do we have any? No. Item 14, which is exclusions for the public. Christian.
It's not on the agenda, but I just want to do a vote of thanks for you— It's not on the agenda, but I just want to do a vote of thanks for you for being chairman for the past two years. This is your last time in the chair, and it's—you've chaired it fairly and even-handedly, and I want to thank you as leader of the council for the work—mostly. Thank you as leader of the council for the work that you've done from the chair. I know that that role involves an awful lot more than just sitting in that chair 12 times over the two-year period and all the work you do on the civic function circuit. So thank you ever so much indeed, and good luck to you. Oh, and—oh, hang on a second. An AD. Before I forget. It's a—it's a delight having a deputy leader who's on his toes right next to me saying, "Don't forget AD." The chairman's consort doesn't get voted on for this. It comes as part of the package, and you've been brilliant, AD. Thank you so much indeed for all your efforts as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's far too kind. Thank you very much. So item four, the exclusion of the public. There are no exclusions of the public. I'm not going to make a long speech. Firstly, where did those eight years go? Secondly, where did the four years go? The privilege for me sitting here and working with my wife Adrienne over the past two years has been incredible. I think a lot of times, we have made a difference, so I'm not going to make a long speech. But what I'm really going to say, and I think we mean this, the real privilege is working with such wonderful people, such as you. People are so committed and so caring and really care about what you do. So the privilege is not sitting here, the privilege is always working with such fabulous people as you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yep, we're all done. I—I—I—nothing to do with me, Mr. Francis, nothing to do with me.